We're thirty closed session of the city council. Could I get a roll call, please?
Yes, council member Waller.
Present.
Council member Castle.
Here.
Council member Kalid Chetovic.
Here.
Council member Obaji is currently absent. Council member Barron.
Here.
Mayor Light.
Here.
Let's see, do we have any blue folder items for the closed session?
Men for closed session.
Obaji is here.
Council member Obaji is present. Thank you. Not for closed session, mayor.
Okay, we have nobody here for public comments on closed session items. Is anyone online?
We do not have anyone on Zoom and there are no ecomments for closed session.
Okay, so then before we recess to closed session, can you read off what we'll be talking about, please?
Yes, as authorized by the government code, it is listed on the published agenda. The following items will be discussed in closed session. Items F1 through F10 are under the title conference with legal counsel existing litigation. For F1, the name of the case is Kenneth Alexander versus City Redondo Beach Slater Waterproofing Inc., County of Los Angeles, Sika Corporation et al., case number 22STCB32700. For F2, the name of the case is AES Southland Development LLC and AES Redondo Beach LLC versus California Coastal Commission, case number BS157789. For F3, the name of the case is New Commune DTLA LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development et al., case number 23STCP00426. For F4, the name of the case is New Commune DTLA LLC and Leonid Pustonikov versus City Redondo Beach and City Council of the City Redondo Beach, case number 22TRCP00203. For F5, the name of the case is New Commune DTLA LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach and those 100 through 100 inclusive, case number 23STCB10146. For F6, the name of the case is Yes in My Backyard, a California nonprofit corporation, Sandra Trossen individual versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development and those 100 through 25 inclusive, case number 23TRCP00325. For F7, the name of the case is in regards to 9300 Wilshire LLC, 9300 Wilshire LLC et al. versus AES Redondo Beach LLC bankruptcy CD Cal, case number 223-AP-01163-ER. For F8, the name of the case is 9300 Wilshire LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development and those 100 through 100 inclusive, case number 23STCP02189. For F9, the name of the case is in regards to 9300 Wilshire LLC, 9300 Wilshire LLC et al. versus AES Redondo Beach LLC bankruptcy CD Cal, case number 223-BK-10918-ER. For F10, the name of the case is City Redondo Beach et al. versus California State Water Resources Control Board, case number 20STCP03193. And for item F11, conference with real property negotiator. The properties are 3007 Vale Avenue, a portion of APN 415-001-7931, parking lot at the corner of Felton Lane and 182nd Street, APN 415-803-3900, 715 Julia Avenue, portion of parcels APN 750-702-0900 and APN 750-702-1900. 1935 Manhattan Beach Boulevard, APN 404-900-8903, 807 Inglewood Avenue, a portion of APN 408-302-4900 and 200 North Pacific Coast Highway, a portion of APN 750-500-9902. Thank you.
Thank you. And city manager Witczanski, who will be speaking?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, mayor. For all items, myself, city attorney Joy Ford, assistant city attorney Cheryl Park. For item F1, we will be joined by Diane McThadden, human resources director, and Dana McCune and Sabira Sherman, who are outside legal counsel on the matter. And then for items F2 through F10, we will be joined by community development director Mark Weiner.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to recess to closed session, please?
Move to recess to closed session.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All four?
Aye.
Okay, we are recessing to closed session. We will come back on or about six o'clock to report out on anything we do in the meeting that's reportable and then start the open session. Thank you.
Thank you.
4:30 closed session of the City Council. Could I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Kalichadovich.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji is currently absent. Councilmember Barron.
Here.
Mayor Light.
Here.
Let's see, do we have any blue folder items for the closed session?
None for closed session.
Obaji is here.
Councilmember Obaji is present, thank you. Not for closed session, Mayor.
Okay, we have nobody here for public comments on closed session items. Is anyone online?
We do not have anyone on Zoom and there are no ecomments for closed session.
Okay, so then before we recess to closed session, can you read off what we'll be talking about, please?
Yes, as authorized by the government code, it is listed on the published agenda. The following items will be discussed in closed session. Items F1 through F10 are under the title Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. For F1, the name of the case is Kenneth Alexander versus City Redondo Beach Slater Waterproofing Inc., County of Los Angeles, Sika Corporation et al., case number 22STCB32700. For F2, the name of the case is AES Southland Development LLC and AES Redondo Beach LLC versus California Coastal Commission, case number BS157789. For F3, the name of the case is New Community TLA LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development et al., case number 23STCP00426. For F4, the name of the case is New Community TLA LLC and Leonid Pustonikov versus City Redondo Beach and City Council of the City Redondo Beach, case number 22TRCP00203. For F5, the name of the case is New Community TLA LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, and those 1 through 100 inclusive, case number 23STCB10146. For F6, the name of the case is Yes in My Backyard, a California nonprofit corporation, Sandra Trausen individual, versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development, and those 1 through 25 inclusive, case number 23TRCP00325. For F7, the name of the case is in regards to 9300 Wilshire LLC, 9300 Wilshire LLC et al. versus AES Redondo Beach LLC, bankruptcy CD Cal, case number 223-AP-01163-ER. For F8, the name of the case is 9300 Wilshire LLC versus City Redondo Beach, City Council of the City Redondo Beach, City Redondo Beach Department of Community Development, and those 1 through 100 inclusive, case number 23STCP02189. For F9, the name of the case is in regards to 9300 Wilshire LLC, bankruptcy CD Cal, case number 223-BK-10918-ER. For F10, the name of the case, City Redondo Beach et al. versus California State Water Resources Control Board, case number 20STCP03193. And for item F11, Conference with Real Property Negotiator. The properties are 3007 Vale Avenue, a portion of APN 415-001-7931, parking lot at the corner of Felton Lane and 182nd Street, APN 415-803-3900, 715 Julia Avenue, portion of parcels APN 750-702-0900 and APN 750-702-1900, 1935 Manhattan Beach Boulevard, APN 404-900-8903, 807 Inglewood Avenue, a portion of APN 408-302-4900, and 200 North Pacific Coast Highway, a portion of APN 750-500-9902. Thank you.
Thank you, and City Manager Witczanski, who will be speaking.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. For all items, myself, City Attorney Joy Ford, Assistant City Attorney Cheryl Park. For item F1, we will be joined by Diane McThadden, Human Resources Director, and Dana McCune and Sabira Sherman, who are outside legal counsel on the matter. And then for items F2 through F10, we will be joined by Community Development Director Mark Weiner.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to recess to closed session, please?
Move to recess to closed session.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all four?
Aye.
Okay, we are recessing to closed session. We will come back on or about 6 o'clock to report out on anything we do in the meeting that's reportable and then start the open session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to reconvene to open session. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Jedovic.
Here.
Councilmember Abaji.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
And Mayor Light.
Here. City Manager Witczanski, do we have any reportable items from the closed session?
None this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, with that, I will call to Okay, with that, I will call to order. Oh, can I get a motion to adjourn to our regular meeting?
Some move.
Second.
All four?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned to the regular meeting of the open session of the city council. Could I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Councilmember Castle.
Here.
Councilmember Kalu Dervich.
Here.
Councilmember Obaji.
Here.
Councilmember Barrett.
Here.
Mayor Light.
Here. Do we have any active duty military or veterans in the office, in the audience today? Stand up and be recognized for your service. And with that, would you all stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag and then remain standing for a moment of silent invocation? We don't have a student here tonight, so I'll, I'll lead it. Okay, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And all please remain standing for a moment of silent invocation. Okay, thank you. You may be seated. Okay, I have no presentations or proclamations tonight, so we'll just do the announcements and the AB 1234 travel expense reports. I'll start. First off, got to attend a great Swim the Avenues event, the eighth annual by Rick Crump and his crew. And I saw Councilmember Kalu Dervich's husband and daughter swimming in the event, so it was a great event. Councilmembers Waller and Castle were there as well to help start the race. FIFA World Cup, had a meeting last week regarding that. We have an upcoming meeting this week internally and next week with LA Galaxy. We have a 911 ceremony on Thursday at 0900 out here in the Civic Center, out in front of the Civic Center. LA Kings 5K is this Saturday. We have a meeting with the county supervisor, staff relating to Dominguez Park. We'll report out what we get on that. Open water polo coming up the 20th, hopefully. Hopefully we can get those last checklist items off. There's a family comedy show at St. Andrews on the 20th also, from 5:30 to 7:30. I got asked to a meeting with the Kings to talk about things we could work together. That will be happening at the end of next week. We have a couple Olympic committee meetings coming up. And then I, we have the Perry Park Teen Center ribbon cutting, I think that's Thursday night, the 18th, correct? At 5:00 to 6:30 PM. And that's all I had. So this time we'll start with you, Councilmember Kalu Dervich.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I attended the Executive Committee for Regional Homeless Alignment Meeting last Friday. We discussed Measure A tax dollar spending and the organizational plan for the new county entity that is servicing for homelessness. And I did submit a $25 parking reimbursement for that. I attended Swim the Avenues and I got to see my youngest Clara finish her first open water swim. It was awesome. Great energy, what a great event. And we're so lucky to have such a great place for all of these water sports. Let's see, this morning I attended South Bay Aerospace Alliance General Meeting. I was speaking with members about the importance of our Air Force Base here in Los Angeles and the economic impact it has on this region. Also was informed that $13 billion was allocated in the federal budget for Space Force and specifically contracts that are going to Golden Dome. So those kinds of contracts are, are up and available for large and small businesses in our region. And that's a huge impact that we could potentially gain here. Tomorrow I will also be touring Northrop Grumman with some council members, city staff, school board members and staff to tour their campus and continue this conversation about the importance of aerospace in the region and how we can further secure that and the work that they do here in the region because it is vital. And I have my community meeting on Friday, the 19th at Beach Cities Health District at 6:00 PM. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Obaji.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Reiterate what the mayor said about the Perry Park Teen Center ribbon cutting. That's Thursday, September 18th at 5:00 o'clock at Perry Park Teen Center. I went to the COG Transportation Meeting on Monday. We had a presentation from Georgia Sheridan and the Metro Project Team for the Sea Line Extension. Now, I know that it's called the K Line, but they decided to preserve the Sea Line Extension name for the extension. So what they said is that they will plan to release the final EIR this week. The final EIR will address the at-grade alternative, the hybrid alternative, the Hawthorne alternative, the high-frequency bus route, and the no, no build. And the hybrid alternative, which was the quote-unquote locally preferred alternative, will, will have an overage of about $1 billion that is not funded. And when asked whether, when I asked how much the overage would be on the Hawthorne alternative, Ms. Sheridan, Director Sheridan didn't, or manager Sheridan didn't have an answer, but said it was more than 1B, maybe 1.5 or close to 2. So we'll get more details on that as the info comes out. Additionally, they stated that the Metro will probably consider this in about a month or two, but they're going to give us all time to review the EIR. Also, it'll be entirely available online and you'll be able to search for particular subjects that are of interest to you and look that up. So I will also host my community meeting coming up soon. I'll announce that date at our next meeting and through email. And we'll have a lot to discuss. Thanks.
Do you want to talk about the Sunday?
There's an event at, in Lawndale regarding the Metro Project. It's at William Green. Let me see real quick. It's the, the park is New and Row at William Green Elementary School at 1:00 PM on Sunday, September 14, 2025. Lawndale, the Lawndale Mayor should be there and a bunch of activists to talk about the best way to interact with Metro. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Castle.
Just to.
Councilback and forth.
Exactly. Just to reiterate, I attended the Swim the Avenues event, which was actually his most successful event. Normally he says all of the slots are sold out when he has 500 swimmers. And he actually had a total of 520 swimmers this year, so it was a fantastic event for him and it keeps growing every year. And building on that excitement, again, we have the water polo match coming up on the 20th. And there are, basically, we're getting lots of traction from people who are interested in attending these events down in the waterfront and here in Redondo Beach. So I think in terms of building momentum toward the World Cup next year and also toward the Olympics, that, you know, these should be successful events for the city and, you know, a good addition to the amenities at the waterfront.
And I think they, he told me that they had swimmers from Brazil and Europe for the first time, so it's getting worldwide recognition now.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, Councilmember Barrett.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I did want to make an announcement this week, and it is to thank Mike Klein and the entire Public Works staff for really a great job they've done, in particular at Anderson Park with respect to the new playground equipment and the repairs they've done to bring that back. Both the slide and the jungle gym net has been out of action for a while, but through, I think, persistence and skill, they've been able to, to get that done and it's up and working. Yeah, and for those of us who don't know, getting things done in Public Works and throughout the organization, it's, it's not like ordering a pizza, you know, hey, bring this here and it's arrived and done in 30 minutes or less. They've got to find the material, source it, price it, procure it, secure it, take delivery, stay on top of the entire chain, and ultimately install it. And that's exactly what they did at Anderson Park, and it's appreciated. As well as at Dale Page Park, I think, as you know, Mayor, the pickleball courts, you know, they made improvements there and they're continuing to refine that. So a big thank you to Public Works. And if I may, while I'm on it, I wanted to thank the city manager, who has assembled, trained and maintained a staff throughout the organization that I know you hold to the highest standards. And perhaps even more tellingly, they are motivated to hold themselves to the highest standards, and I think that shows leadership. So thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Waller.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the Clean Power Alliance Board of Directors meeting. At that meeting, the board approved two 15-year agreements with Sunzia Wind North and South, adding 125 megawatts of renewable capacity to Clean Power Alliance's portfolio. That should help with some long-term clean energy and greenhouse gas emissions and allow increased capacity. Clean Power Alliance also secured up to $964,000 in grant funding through the Equitable Building Decarbonization Program to provide electrification and energy efficiency upgrades, such as heat pumps, induction stoves and insulation for income-qualified households in disadvantaged communities. And the last major action we did was the board voted to extend membership to the cities of Cudahy and Fillmore, with service expected to begin in 2027. Fillmore is the last city in Ventura County, meaning that Clean Power Alliance will have 100% of Ventura County covered. Also, I attended the roundtable last week and heard a presentation from Redondo Beach Unified School District's Anthony Toronto talking about career technical education pathways. Tended Swim the Avenues as well, and I'll take a rematch next year for the little race that we had when I'm not recovering from a broken bone.
Excuses.
Dynabout Artesia is tomorrow, 5:00 to 8:30 PM, followed by Rise and Shine Redondo from NRBBA at South Bay Social. That is Thursday, the 11th at 7:45 AM. LA Kings 5K was mentioned already, that this weekend, Sunday, September 14th at 2:00 PM. Citizens for Redondo's Trees is holding its second meeting and forming committees. They will be at the Redondo Room at Beach Cities Health District, 2:00 PM on Sunday. And my community meeting will be Saturday, September 13th, from 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM at the Alta Vista Community Center. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. With that, jumping down to item E, approval of the Order of Agenda. Could I get a, would anyone like to pull anything or move anything on the agenda? Okay, I see no one. Can I get a motion to approve the Order of Agenda as written?
Move to approve the Order of the Agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. All four?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, so we'll be following the agenda that's been published. We have no agency recesses, so jumping down to G. Now, do we have any blue folder items tonight?
Yes, for J1, public participation on non-agenda items, public communications for N1, regarding discussion, possible action regarding changes to the parking regulations for commercial properties along Artesia Aviation. The 2019 Parking Study Memorandum and public communications. P1, discussion of possible action regarding the changes to the rules of conduct and decorum for the city council and commission meetings. Public communication. And that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to receive and file?
Move to receive and file.
Second.
All four?
Aye.
Okay, that was unanimous. Okay, now we're jumping to consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull anything from the consent calendar? Kalu Dervich, Councilmember Obaji. Councilmember Barrett.
None.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar?
Motion to approve consent calendar.
We have.
Just saying.
We have a motion in a second. Would any member of the public wish to address any of the items H1 through, what are we at tonight? H?
H5.
Five. What he said.
H5, yeah.
Before we do our vote. No one? Anyone online?
I have none, none on Zoom. I have one e-comment for H3, which oppose, one e-comment for H5, which oppose, and that's it.
Okay, I'll call the vote then. All four?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion, all items H1 through H5 pass unanimously. Are there any you need to read off?
None.
Okay, so item I, there are no excluded consent calendar items. Next is item J, that's public participation on non-agenda items. This section is intended to provide members of the public the opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on this agenda for action. This section is limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be afforded three minutes to address the mayor and council. And each speaker will be permitted to speak only once. Written requests will go first, followed by people in the audience and then anyone online. And we do have some written requests tonight. First is Wayne Craig and second is Jim Mueller.
Gets as high as it goes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wayne Craig, resident of District 1. I wanted to mention today, actually, was part of a tour that went to the West Basin Water Recycling Center in El Segundo as part of the South Bay Associates Railtors. If you haven't gone, check it out. It's actually really interesting. But even more interesting is when you ask the director who's giving the tour, you know, you guys are doing great work here, but what about the impact of all the RENA housing allocation numbers that will take away the water that you're saving and now having to give it up? They had some very interesting looks on their faces. I said, well, you know, Redondo, we have X amount of houses, all these other cities. It'd be great if you maybe let the state regulators know what's going on. Because if you keep on doing this, you're going to be diminishing the impact, what you're, what you're trying to effectuate in the city by saving water. On another issue I wanted to mention, the street sweeping app that we have, we were touting it and everything. I don't know if it works across city, but it doesn't work in South Redondo, particularly South Broadway where I live. I don't think it's been accurate for about a month. So when you check on it, it doesn't say, it's always red all day long, interestingly enough. And I mention that because on the side of the street where I live, you know, we can't park on Tuesday mornings, which is fine. You know, I mean, it says signs, I know we're not to park there or else, Jim, I know you know this as well too, we live on the same street. But interestingly, interestingly enough, the next day on Wednesday, this is the day after we have street sweeping on the west side of the street, a ticket was put on my car saying my car had been parked there for 72 hours. I don't know how that's possible because the day before is street sweeping and I definitely wasn't there because I had a doctor appointment that I went to. Now, thankfully it was a warning ticket, so I did call the police and said, hey, I don't know how you got this info, but at any rate, the street sweeping app, there's, I don't know if it needs to be updated or something, it's not working, but it's not. And finally, I know this may not be the most happy news, but I heard at one of the, my council members' district meeting a couple of weeks ago that we did get some word back about the gun range. And I'd be interested to know if in fact we know what the final result of it is. I was told it didn't get through. If that's the case, then I would make a recommendation to the city that, you know, we allocated, I think it was 1.3 million toward that project. We already spent 200,000 of it. Seeing as we are in a fiscal, in a structural deficit right now, maybe apply that money to the general fund and use it to something like paving parts of Grant Avenue, which I know is something that we still can't finish because we didn't have enough money for. So if that's the case, you know what, let's take it, move on and apply it to something that the residents could use right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I got one of those 72-hour tickets once too, and same thing, it had, I had to have moved it the day before. So I don't know how that happens. The app has been working for me, but I did not check it the last two weeks. So we'll check on that and we did not get the grant for the gun range. So with that, Mr. Mueller, you're next, and then Holly Osborne.
Good evening, Council. Jim Mueller, District 5. Always a pleasure to talk to you. Our city has a unique opportunity to jumpstart development on Artesia Boulevard at minimal cost. Create a public market at the site where the power line crosses Artesia Boulevard. First, Artesia is a most important corridor, but much of it is dominated by pass-through traffic and underutilized parcels. A public market would transform that space into a true community destination, something that invites residents to stop, shop and gather. The site, this site is centrally located, highly accessible by foot or bike, and there is parking nearby. Here are the benefits of having a regular public market at that site. It offers affordable stalls for local vendors, startup food entrepreneurs and artisans who might not yet afford a permanent storefront or others who want to test the commercial potential in that neighborhood. Next, surrounding shops and restaurants along Artesia will benefit from foot traffic attracted to the market. Public markets are not all commercial. They're cultural spaces that showcase local food, music and crafts. They create pride of place and sense of belonging. By bringing in fresh produce, public markets tend to improve access to healthy foods and reduce the need to drive long- reduce the need to drive long distances for specialty goods. Finally, public market sales are taxed and revenue accrues to the city. The site under the power line is challenging for traditional development, but ideal for open air or pop-ups. Many cities, from Santa Monica's Main Street to San Diego's Liberty Station, have proven how public markets can thrive in unconventional spaces. Redondo Beach can take that same spirit and tailor it to our own community character. Does Redondo have the resources to set up a public market in North Redondo? I've spoken with Linda Habash, who manages the Riviera Market, and she expressed interest in the idea. A public market aligns perfectly with Artesia and Aviation Corridor Action Plan goals, revitalization, small business incubation, and creating quick wins that residents can enjoy with a short timeframe. A public market at the power line crossing on Artesia Boulevard is a chance to reimagine a difficult site into something lively, healthy, and uniquely Redondo Beach. It's a low-cost, high-impact project that can bring people together while supporting our small business ecosystem. Thank you for considering this idea. I hope we can explore the next steps to make it a reality. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Sure.
Mr. Mueller? I believe I did speak with the head of the North Redondo Beach Business Association about doing a farmer's market for that area along Artesia. And as you know, you spoke to Linda Habash from the Riviera Farmer's Market, and actually, that's run by the Riviera, the RVA. Exactly. So I think that working with the business association would be a great place to start.
Well, that's true, but they don't seem to be interested in anything but one-off kind of events.
One-off events?
It'd be interesting to see if they're interested in an ongoing event.
Okay.
And sponsoring that, but I have my doubts.
Okay, all right. We'll keep pushing for it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Holly Osborne, and then Nikki Negretti Mitchell.
Good evening. This is Holly Osborne, District 5. So good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and staff. I sent you all a speech that I had given about three months ago. It met one of the Metro Committees. They've all heard variations of it, but I think it's new information for you, and see, I want to keep you informed. So, as you know, for the Green Line has submitted, Metro has submitted plans to add an LRT, which means two additional tracks on a narrow row right-of-way that already has pipelines and a BNSF freight train on it. Okay? This is the freight train. Okay, these are the pipelines. Now, for anybody that's watching on TV, I really need to emphasize this. A lot of people still think that the LRT is gonna, is not two additional tracks. They think it's all going to be on one track. You would not believe the number of people that think that. Oh, can't you just use the track that's already there? No, you're going to have to put in two more sets of tracks, and the row is too narrow. This is 75 feet wide in the narrow part in Landale. And there are rules about where the pipelines can be. They're right here now. They're supposed to be at least 25 feet from the freight train, which they are. Metro's going to move them here. There was a BNSF engineer at one of the Landale meetings, and I showed him this diagram, and he said, "That is a violation of our rules." I put it in big type on your thing. No pipe may be placed closer than 25 feet from the center line of any track. This is closer, okay? Now, this diagram is not mine. This appeared in an April video, April 2024, after the DEIR came out. The DEIR was silent on all this, okay? So I can't wait to see how they're getting, what they're saying about this now. But anyway, this is just one problem, okay? I'm an engineer, so I track mathematical problems, but I was explaining this to a neighbor of mine who still thought the one thing. I said, "No, it's two, two more." And he said, "What?" I said, "Yes." He said, "Well, that sucks. There's no room, and that'll really tank the property values." But it also tanks the quality of life, and that's actually even more important. So this, I'm sure you all understand this, but I don't know about everybody online, okay? Thank you.
You said you emailed this to us?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's a blue folder.
Just today?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't been on my computer that much, so thank you.
Did anybody's... Yeah, I might.
Thank you. Okay, last card I have is Nikki Negretti Mitchell.
Good evening, everybody. Nikki Negretti Mitchell, District 3. It's been a while. It's good to see you. I want to thank Councilmember Obaji for the report, and it's no surprise that they realized the cost on trying to make the right-of-way work is way beyond what they anticipated. And we've been trying to tell them all along, you know, but... So I just wanted to come and just kind of bring the conversation back and reiterate some three major points. The first one is about the fuel cor... That's a fuel corridor. That corridor in the right-of-way is only used for fuel. It's all highly pressurized, seven pipelines right behind my house, and these freight tankers that sometimes total up to 42 tankers of this highly pressurized gas. So I'm at my block party a couple of weeks ago, and I meet a neighbor I've never met, and he is a refinery worker at Torrance Refinery. And he was just dying to tell me about his concerns, and I could see the emotion as he's talking to me about it. You can just tell, you know, when people are kind of, you know, get kind of shaky. But the risk, he's, "Have you heard about this explosion over here in Texarkana?" And, you know, and he's, he's really concerned. He said, "I, you know, there's no way they should do the metro, you know? That's, that's totally incompatible, completely incompatible, that they mix commuter rails into a fuel corridor." So that's one problem. But the other problem, according to him, is just the risk as it is now, you know, with just the tankers going through and the pipelines. So, you know, hopefully, somebody can look at that in the future. So there was a new scene called in Landale, and that's relevant to our unstable soils arguments. And it was under the street. Metro says they can haul four and a half miles of bad soil and replace it with their good soil. They can, but they can't dig under our homes, and they can't dig under city infrastructure. They can't dig under the asphalt in the roads, you know, to replace that soil. So that is, you know, Band-Aid doesn't fly. The other serious concern has to do with Holly's arguments about width. And, you know, contractors over there have stated that there's not enough room, which points to property acquisitions. Metro states they don't anticipate taking homes, but that doesn't specify partial yards or, you know, that sort of thing, either driveways. And I'm running out of time, but I just want to thank you all for your support. It's good to see you again, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on non-agenda items?
Good evening. Georgia Agantner, District 2. In the last month or so, I've come across a couple of interesting articles. One of them refers to Anl Valley residents are engaged in legal battle against massive illegal dumping, and one of the companies named in that is Athens, doing business, or its enterprise doing businesses, Athens, and then there's names that follow. I didn't make copies for everyone, but if I can get a motion to receive and file, I'd like to submit this to you. And the second one is from July. It's just, it's a really good statistical article about cannabis. And I don't know if it's from the Daily Breeze. You guys may have read all of these, but if not, it's, it's helpful, I think. So could I submit?
Move to receive and file. Second.
Okay, motion in a second, all four?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
The second thing I want to do is thank you. I don't know if it had anything to do with me complaining three weeks ago about the street sweeping situation on Carnelian, but I was walking along the other day, I went, "The streets are swept." And you guys have changed, someone changed the sign on that street. Whoever did it, thank you, because now they're sweeping the streets the way they shouldn't. It's on both sides of the street. And they were intelligent about it, because the street sweeping hours are between 7:00 and 8:00, so it's less traffic with Joes, so maybe it doesn't impede their business, but good job. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank the city manager and the police chief on that.
Good job. Was it because of me or just overall complaints? Who knows? Thank you. Good job.
Okay, anyone else wish to address the City Council on non-agenda items? Anyone online?
Yes, I have Warren Shu. Go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the time. My name is Warren Shu, District 5. Had a couple of things I wanted to address. I've spoken with Councilman Barron about one of these before, but I have a couple of things to add on top of that. The first is around concerns for traffic around Vale and Plant. For those of you who know the area, that's right where Lincoln Elementary is, and that's where the kindergarten little corner is, especially during school drop-off and pickup hours. The traffic there is pretty significant, and a lot of, a lot of families try to cross there. And specifically on Vale and Plant, you know, I'd really like to see either a crosswalk or crossing guards assigned there, because just since this school here started, so we're about, what, a few weeks in, we've seen a few, a handful of near misses from cars hitting kids. You know, even with parents crossing with kids and holding kids' hands, kids are running ahead and all that kind of stuff, and I've seen a pretty good handful of near accidents there. This one is one that Councilman Barron's heard from me before, which is the traffic on Robinson. And I understand that it's a, it's an emergency vehicle throughway, but I think, you know, my request to you guys is that we need to reevaluate that and how that works, because the traffic on Robinson is pretty ridiculous at this point. My understanding is that there was a study done before with a speed, with a speed radar there, but people are still speeding like crazy. People are running stop signs. You know, e-bikers are going real fast without stopping at all. There are quite a few small kids, including mine, on Robinson, and we've had near accidents with e-bikes and with cars, who are just sort of driving through. So would really like to see and have a conversation about how do we potentially reevaluate that as the through street, because the amount of traffic that goes through what is a residential area with little kids walking on sidewalks is tremendously dangerous. The last one is the same intersection on Robinson and Green, where you go from Aviation heading towards Inglewood. That one section is a one-way, but what we've been seeing a lot more is people going the wrong way down there. So people are driving from Aviation Way or Aviation coming down Robinson when it's the wrong way, and then just using that and sort of, right, there's obviously a tremendous amount of danger involved in that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, the next person is Kyle Johnson. Go ahead.
Kyle, did you say?
Sorry?
No, go ahead, Kyle.
I'm sorry. Hello, my name is Kyle Johnson, and I am a member of District 1. I'm an avid transit user in support of the right-of-way or row option. I believe, I'm in support of it, because it's faster, cheaper, and more popular. I would love to be closer to public transit. Simply put, the row option, according to Metro's unschedules, is faster than any other option by many years, and I would love to see transit build as quickly as possible in L.A. County. The row option is also the cheapest of the options. As Councilmember Obaji said, while there is a $1 billion overrun on the row option, the Hoffman option is even more expensive. And with Caltrans offering a potential veto, turn thirds of the way through the project, there's no guarantee the Hoffman option would even get done. In addition, the row option would already connect to the existing Redondo Beach Public Transit Center that we spent a lot of money and time building. I also work on the, work on the CUN and would be, love to be able to communicate, excuse me, commute to work on it. The row option projects 1.5 million new riders when it's built. The row option is also more popular among South Bay residents by Metro's own statistically significant survey, and involves less eminent domain. The Hoffman option would involve significantly more eminent domain, because the metro does not own any property along the route, whereas the metro owns most of the track along the right-of-way. While there might be some eminent domain, there would be significantly less, making the row option significantly more popular. I would encourage the City Council to write a letter to Metro in favor of the row option and failing that to not take a position on the preferred route, because I do not believe that there is a significant consensus among Redondo Beach residents as to what is the most popular option. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
That concludes our comments.
Okay, any? Any comments? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have no public hearings, so we will not have ex parte communication, no items continued from previous agendas, so we will now skip down to N, item N1. This regards parking regulations for commercial properties along Artesia and Aviation.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I'm joined by my planning manager, Sean Scully. And just to provide some background on this item, in 2020, the city adopted the Artesian Aviation Area Corridor Plan, also referred to as the ACAP. And the intent of the plan is to develop strategies and development standards that will look to revitalize the corridor. As part of that, the city went ahead and reduced the parking requirements for certain preferred uses. That included restaurants and office uses. It also made some minor changes to the floor area ratio along the ACAP. On August 8th, staff presented to the City Council on the update to the general plan land use element with a specific focus on the ACAP area, and that's because there are various policies, including the floor area ratio that are in the land use element, that affect the ACAP. So that's why we, we focused on that as part of the land use element. At that meeting, the City Council considered various options for the ACAP. One is to increase the FAR from 0.6 to 1.5 along the corridor. The other is a reduction or elimination in parking requirements. The City Council also considered eliminating the open space requirements, which is a barrier to maximizing FAR on the property. And then also other development standards, such as rooftop dining and signage, which are set to go to the City Council at a later date. So these were all topics of discussion regarding the ACAP. And as part of the presentation, staff demonstrated some of the challenges with achieving a 1.5 FAR, or even the current 0.6 FAR, while also meeting the parking requirements, the city code parking requirements. So in response to that, the City Council decided in concept to eliminate the parking requirements along the ACAP and directed staff to prepare an ordinance that would effectuate that. So tonight, we're back before the council. We're looking, seeking additional input before we go forward with this and take it to the Planning Commission. It's scheduled for next week to be heard by the Planning Commission. With that, I do want to, I just wanted to share two examples of the diagrams that were presented at the last meeting, demonstrating the challenges of parking. This one shows the point, a 0.64 FAR, which is around what's allowed right now, and it demonstrates that even at the current floor area ratios, if someone were to build a new building, they would need to have tandem valet parking in order to accommodate the likely parking requirements for the use. The 1.5 FAR was demonstrated on a 19,500-square-foot lot, and what's demonstrated by this is you would need approximately 98 to 117 parking spaces. That would require three levels of subterranean parking to provide that. That's the only way you could achieve the 1.5 FAR. So this was some of the basis for the City Council's decision to eliminate the parking requirements. The council also discussed a parking study that was prepared as part of the ACAP plan, which identified that there's a surplus of parking along the ACAP. It was, the, the study was performed in 2019. It was done by Farr and Pierce, and they went out and did a survey on a couple days to see what the average parking occupancy was, and it's typically at 68% for public spaces is what they found, and 50% for private. So that leaves about a 1,300, give or take, parking surplus on any given day. And I do want to remind the council, the reason the overall... the overall intent, the reason the city is looking to increase the FAR as a part of the ACAP. It identified some of the challenges of redeveloping these properties, and one is the limited floor area ratios. There's really not much of an incentive for somebody to come in and build a new structure because the structure would need to be small. Furthermore, they likely are non-conforming with regard to parking now, and if they were to demo the building and build something new, they would have to bring it into compliance. And as the images displayed, that would be difficult to achieve. So that's really the intent behind increasing the FAR, reducing the parking, is to promote revitalization and redevelopment of the corridor. So staff has prepared a draft ordinance. I'm just going to summarize real quickly what it includes. It worked off of a ordinance that was prepared in response to the ACAP, where we reduced parking standards for preferred uses. So it's working off existing code sections. It does eliminate parking requirements within the ACAP for non-residential uses. It requires design review for any overlap parking agreements between adjoining properties. And then also for parking where the applicant's proposing valet, tandem, and mechanical lifts. And the purpose being is that if they, it would give the city some oversight of these features, like a car lift, or if they're proposing to share parking between properties, how that's going to be managed and coordinated. So that's why the ordinance includes that requirement. And it also includes, references the design standards should the developer choose to build a parking garage or lot, which was probably would be likely for some of these projects. But the concept of this is it would be determined more by the market than by a city code as to what extent the parking would be provided by the site. So those are really the highlights of the ordinance. It's a fairly limited text change that's being presented. I do want to note, because this came up as a question, there's a reference in the ordinance to fast food and drive-through restaurants. And there's some language that was in the code based on the ACAP that reduced parking for preferred uses, and it did reduce it for restaurants. However, there was a carve-out for fast food restaurants and drive-through that those would not be provided the same parking benefits as a more standard restaurant. So working with the existing code, that's still in there. Staff had carried that through, at least in the draft ordinance, where the, these types of restaurants would not receive the parking benefit, the outright parking waiver with this ordinance. However, the council may consider just having a blanket waiver of parking for all commercial uses. But I just wanted to give the background on that and why it's shown that way in the draft ordinance. I also wanted to note there's some language in the code. And regardless of what the city council decides on parking for fast food and drive-through, that states that fast food and drive-through is not allowed on Artesia and Aviation. This actually conflicts with other sections of the code, particularly the land use tables in the zoning district that state that these uses are allowed. So there's a conflict there. It wouldn't, the provisions that are presented as part of this include that language it disallows, that's part of the parking section of the code. So the point being is that does need to be cleaned up, and if it isn't allowed use, we would recommend striking that prohibition. It's in the parking section of the code. Unless the council directs staff to prohibit these uses outright, but that'd be a larger code amendment. So I just wanted to point that out.
Is it, sorry, is it fast food, drive-through that's prohibited, or any drive-through that's prohibited?
So it's, the code just says fast food or drive-through. It doesn't really specify.
Okay, but the coffee bean that was, that came into development probably in the last four years has a drive-through. And that was, was allowed. So we're interpreting in a way that was inconsistent with the plain text.
If we received an application for a drive-through or fast food, we would not, we would have to look at the two code sections and go with the section, the chapter that addresses allowed land uses. This is kind of a, just an isolated sentence in the parking section of the code. It really doesn't apply to land use.
Okay, got it.
And if I may, Mayor?
I have some. Are you concluded?
Almost.
Add one more slide.
You have something on this slide?
Yeah, very quick. So this would be an opportunity to remove that prohibition on the, quote, "fast food and drive-through," correct?
That's correct, yes.
And we'd have an opportunity if the council decided to make it clear that this lift on parking restrictions applies to all non-residential uses.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Thank you, Mayor.
And that's the policy direction that we are seeking from council on this, since it was, it was considered with the previous adoption of this code section on parking within the ACAP. And then also other things to consider for the ordinance as this moves forward. There could be a built-in requirement that's periodically reviewed, possibly annually, by the city council and/or Planning Commission. We could evaluate its effectiveness in terms of projects that are coming through, in terms of potential impacts that have been observed. So there could be a scheduled review and check-in. There could also be a termination provision based on objective impacts associated with the ordinance. If we find that it's being successful and we're getting an abundance of projects, however, that we're getting spillover traffic in the neighborhoods, the council could repeal the ordinance, they could modify it. You could either do that through your review, or there could be like a set sunset clause unless the council continues this. That's something to consider. It's just a way of checking back in on the effectiveness of this and whether there's any issues that arise. And also, there could be a requirement that the ordinance include a discretionary entitlement associated with waiving parking. That could be a CUP, conditional use permit, or administrative design review. I think the one challenging of the, challenging aspect of this is it would be, it may be challenging to meet the criteria, to make the findings that a project, that all the parking can be waived. It's less of a buy-right process. But we did want to present this to the council, something for consideration of a way of checking in on this and having more oversight over the parking situation along the ACAP. And with that, the recommendation is to provide direction to staff. And that concludes the presentation. I'm available for questions, as is Sean.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate you sending out that parking study. When I looked at the parking study, I think it was dated 2018, correct? 1819.
I thought it had a date of 2019.
Well, it's pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID.
Yeah, it was conducted 2018. And it did not include Friday or Saturday nights, which surprised me.
Yeah, it was a weekday and then-
A Saturday midday.
Saturday midday, correct.
And, but there were sections that showed red, which is over 90% or over.
Couple, couple of areas onsite, very limited onsite. It would only be-
Oh yeah, I didn't see anything onsite.
Yeah, but there are a couple of blocks.
The street parking, yeah.
On the street parking.
Yeah, so you know, it's a little long in the tooth, and I'm disappointed. At least what I see, you know, in, in most places I go, Friday and Saturday nights are peak, peak usages.
That's not Artesia Boulevard.
Is that true?
Yeah, not.
Okay.
And then I-
You think midday on a weekday is, is peak?
Unfortunately, we don't have a peak day.
Touche. And you said, so this would apply to non-residential. What if mixed use comes up?
Well, for mixed use, it would, there would be a waiver of parking for the commercial, but there'd be a requirement for the residential units. However, mixed use is not currently allowed within the ACAP, at least not per the new, the updated land use element, which is set for adoption by the council in the coming months.
Okay. I'm a little concerned based on what we see in other parts of the city that if we waive this, and we do have a relatively busy couple parking spaces there that the business next to them may be negatively impacted if we just do carte blanche. Is there, you have any response to that, or is?
I, I mean, I might comment on that just holistically. I think we would welcome that problem compared to what we have today. And our hope would be that we would address those impacts when they occur. And, and I think that's part of the reason, and one thing to note as-
Well, we can't the way this is written.
Well, we could always come back and address impacts. Yeah, so that's the one thing I want to make sure council understands. I think we talked a little bit about this in August when we first brought it up. We always have the ability to pivot. We can come back with ordinance changes as we see impacts on the ground. Whether we embed it in the ordinance language or not, we could come back administratively with periodic reviews. We could provide you an update, say, a year following implementation, let you know what's occurring on Artesia as a result of these changes. We could, you know, provide even more periodic metrics associated with projects as they come forward. So we would, we would be happy to do that ultimately if the council does choose to proceed. And, you know, what we're trying to address here is, I think the council noted last time, we need to do something different to stimulate investment in the, in the corridor. And I think we want to give the private sector the opportunity to be as successful as they can. And given that we have the surplus that's been identified, and I would argue that the 2019, that December of 18, 2019 period is a pretty busy time in our retail history. That was one of our peak sales tax years. The 18, 19 fiscal year is on a, on a, adjusted for inflation, probably our single largest sales tax generating year. So busy from a commerce perspective, pre-COVID for us. So I do think it's probably a fair indication. It's a little long in the tooth, to your point. I mean, things have changed in the last six years, but I don't think it's a quiet year, you know, by comparison. I would be more concerned if it was-
I honestly think if anything, it would have gone down post-COVID.
Yeah, it's probably gotten better since then, right, in terms of impacts? Yeah, if it were 2020, I'd have more concerns, I think, about the timing. But we have the ability to make adjustments. These are not, these are not charter-embedded requirements. We, municipal code adjustments can happen fairly easily for us if we see impact. So that's just, keep that in mind as you deliberate on this.
So to use Councilmember Barrent's term, we're trying to do something bold here.
So that was my term.
Was it your term? Well, I heard multiple people.
Patent pending.
I think we all agreed.
Whomever said it, credit to y'all. And I don't disagree with that. I do think it's kind of, of all the places to not require parking, it seems like a drive-through is a good place not to require parking. So, and we should, we should align the ordinances so that they're congruent with one another and there is no conflict. If we're going to do something bold, I don't think discretionary CUP slash ADR is, is warranted or desired. That's not as bold. Still includes the bureaucracy. And I don't, personally, I don't think we need a sunset clause. I think if it's not working, we'll all hear about it before any stats come through, so.
I think you're right.
And then we can, we can agendize it through referrals to staff, but that's, that's just my thoughts. Councilmember Obaji?
Sure. Well, thanks, Mayor. So it's important to keep in mind that before this, we tried something else. We tried, did a whole study and tried to come up with a whole flexible scheme where people could use the parking provided by another business that was operating during different hours and so on and so forth, and relax the parking requirements that way. It didn't work. We don't have any new businesses as a result of the parking changes. So it is time for something bold and radical. I don't see in here, Director Weiner, the prohibition on parking fronting Artesia Boulevard, which is something that I thought we discussed and had voted to include in there. Borrowed from Pasadena, we had put in a requirement or a prohibition on parking fronting Artesia Boulevard unless it's a city-owned lot.
I may, I may have missed that at the last meeting, but if the council wants to direct staff to incorporate that, we can do that before it returns and before it goes to Planning Commission.
And just to be clear, you mean private parking should be in the rear of the lot?
Right, exactly. Right. So you can have a driveway, obviously, to the parking on the front.
Yeah, you could see the parking, but it can't be along the curb line or behind sidewalk.
If you look at the block, the northern block between McKay and Slosson, it's a whole mini mall of all parking and behind it the subway and Yanagi Kitchen and so on and so forth. It should be the other way around, right? If you want to create a pedestrian neighborhood, the store should be on the front and the parking in the rear.
I guess the one question I would have, in this scenario like we have with Grocery Outlet, though, as an example, where you have a large lot. I mean, we don't have a lot of those examples, but we do have parking immediately behind sidewalk. In that sense, we do have a larger lot that would accommodate that. The, the business is, is obviously in the, on the western side of the property, so.
And that circumstance is built. We're not changing that, right?
Correct, correct. This would be, yeah, it would be all-
It's for new development. If you're going to tear that down and build something new, a boutique hotel, then the parking's either got to be underground or on the rear side of the property, right?
If we had a, if we had, let's say, an ambitious developer that aggregated three or four lots and wanted to come up with a program, you know, we may want to have some flexibility in that standard, depending on how that would work. I mean, if it's side, if it's tandem, maybe in a sense where it's not fronting, but you've got building and you've got parking in a driveline or-
I thought that's what the whole part, what the ACAP, subject to your recommendations, I'm willing to take input, but I thought what the whole recommendation of the ACAP was, was make it walkable, make stores front to the sidewalks, make the sidewalks wider. But if you're walking by parking lots, that's not exactly an appealing place where you want to hop in, right? And you're not seeing anything at that.
Yeah, I do recall that as part of the discussion at the last meeting. So we could incorporate that. I think it may be a good idea to have some, leave some room for flexibility, say, on corner sites where maybe it's challenging to fully screen it. But that's definitely something that we could incorporate. It would probably go in a separate section that addresses the parking lot design, garage design, which is referenced here. So yeah, we can, we can add that.
All right. Thanks. And I would want it to apply, this rollback to apply to both Artesia and Aviation Boulevards in the whole ACAP region. And that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Waller?
Thank you. Going to the, the question about drive-throughs and all that, I don't remember the discussions at GPAC, if we talked about that or not, but at this point, we're trying to not deter businesses. And so to say one type of business is, is different, I'm happy to clean things up and not, not have that one separate group of businesses that have drive-throughs. I would like to see periodic reviews, but not periodic reviews of, here, how's parking doing? It's what's going on with parking? How many new businesses do we have? What's going on with revenue? Sort of a general success of this plan. Because if, two years from now, we say, oh yeah, there's still no problems with parking, but we have no new businesses and revenues down, maybe we need to like throw, you know, be bold and come up with another idea since then. So I would like to, I like the idea of the periodic reviews, but it's almost more of a what's going on? How successful are we? And what might we want to change as opposed to, hey, let's, let's fix this. Because at some point, if this is working, one of those reviews will be, the result will say, parking is at 80, 90%. We need to start putting a halt on the, the ability to not have any parking. So I'm good with that. And I do recall Councilmember Obaji's talking about the Artesia fronting parking. And I definitely agree with that. We want to make it, we don't want to have cars being what people walk past. If you need the flexibility for certain lots, larger lots, or corners or something, maybe it could be a CUP. I don't know how you want to do that. I'll leave that up to you. But where possible, I would love to, to make it so that when somebody walks down or drives down Artesia, they're not seeing a parking lot. That's it for me.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Barrent?
And thank you, Mayor. And thanks to staff for bringing this back and putting this in place for our consideration. On the Artesia fronted parking issue, you know, one potential concern about that is sometimes businesses are more successful when the shop is behind and they have the parking in front. It kind of invites cars in as opposed to having that sort of monolith in the front, which could be a disincentive for people to pull in in the first instance. And I'm, I'm not in the market. I'm not an investor developer in the market. So I would, I think Councilmember Obaji and Waller raised good points. Yet at this stage, when we're pursuing the bold action, I'd like to give the market some flexibility on using their judgment, so to speak, as- some flexibility on using their judgment, so to speak, as to what would be best to bring in a business that would be attractive to residents and customers and help to revitalize. And although I really like the concept of doing everything we can to make Artesia more walkable, I live near there, other council members live close by, that would be my only reluctance. It would be to include in this initial rollout of an ordinance, that type of restriction, which may be pretty significant, and prevent this from taking off in the first place. The alternative would be, you know, to come back, part of a periodic review and see, you know, if we're so fortunate to have some development there, that's positive, and go from there. So that would be my only concern and request on that is we hold off on the, that particular restriction and kind of prejudge what the market may be doing. So anyway, that was it.
Councilmember Obaji.
On Councilmember Waller's point about checking on this, see how it's doing, I think one thing we did the last strategic plan was put it on the strategic plan to kind of get a report on how development's going along Artesia Boulevard with regard to the parking changes that we did make. And so we could just continue to keep that on the strategic plan to check in on that. I think some flexibility, if you can think of any that you could put in for the frontage, would be sufficient. But if you give people the option to put it in the front, I think they might just be inclined to put some spots in the front, whereas if, if they don't have to do any parking and they're not allowed to put it in the front, they'll either think, okay, it's got to be either an underground garage, or I got to put a driveway to get it to the back, or I'm just not going to do parking altogether. But, which is fine, because we've got plenty of space in, you know, in the area. And if they, they can reach an agreement with an adjacent property owner that has parking. But let's see how it goes.
Yeah, well, we can think on it. I mean, we could subject perhaps frontage parking to an ADR or something where at least planning's got to work with the developer and, and think about that, you know, as it, as it means to compel them to think pedestrian-oriented design, et cetera, to your points earlier.
And that was pulled, that wasn't just pulled out of a hat, but it was pulled from Pasadena also. They have the exact, that exact prohibition relative to Colorado. And even their city lots are off of Colorado. They're, they're on these other streets surrounding, granted, they have commercial areas adjacent to their main commercial corridor. So I think we need to look to other areas that provide inspiration for what our two-lane, you know, four-lane Artesia Boulevard can become and, and borrow from them what they've done for success.
And on that point, an ADR is something that you think would strike the right balance?
Yeah, I think it would give us a chance to influence design in a quality way. I don't know, Mark, if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I think the code could be written in a way where the first preference is parking at the rear, and if they want to provide at the front, that would be an exception. It would be subject to certain standards and reasoning as to why it needs to be in the front. So staff can work on crafting something, return to the city council with it, and if the council's comfortable, can move forward. If not, we'll just limit it one way or the other.
All right, thank you. I think you need to be careful with it because there's, if I look at several businesses, for example, on PCH in Hermosa, there's electric cart sales, and they don't have, they don't have parking yet on their property. So they park their carts in parking, in public parking, to display them as people are driving by to attract them in. Similarly, you know, you have, you do have things like bicycle shops that will use the front parking lot to display bicycles outside, you know, so to attract people in. So I think you need to be careful of that. I like the ADR idea, maybe, at least to give some flexibility in that. I would be afraid of a one-size-fits-all that we're thinking up here, not looking at all potential businesses. And I do think, I think there's some, I know there's some auto shops along there. Not necessarily that you want them parking in front, but I don't think you want to encourage them to park the cars that are waiting to be worked on, on the street, because that's not attractive and, and it takes away parking for other, for the public that may be coming down there. So those are considerations, I think. I like the ADR idea versus just blanket ruling it out. That's the last one I had. Councilmember Castle and Kala Jervich, did you want to opine on this before we, I call for a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I, it seems like we're all in alignment on being bold with these changes. I, I hear Councilmember Barrett's concern, and I think the ADR option is a good way to suggest what we're looking for, but maybe add a little bit of flexibility to it. So I think that's a great compromise. And, you know, I, I think this couldn't come fast enough, so.
And, and I'm in agreement with what the other council members have said as well. And again, I think, you know, it would, we would, through our strategic plan, review it to see how it's working, if it actually is encouraging new development along Artesian Aviation. And I would not like to make it basically a conditional use permit where it would have to be, developers would have to come. Because when a developer is coming in to look at a property, they're making a plan of what they can do, bidding according to that plan. And if there's some question about whether they can or cannot have parking, that they'll just go with the, you know, least risky and hope for the best. So I think to accomplish everything that we want to, we'll monitor it through our strategic plan and, and, but maintain some flexibility to see how it's, see if it's working and how effective it is.
So, so I think what I'm hearing is, number one, the consensus is, remove all the, there is no parking standard for non-residential uses in Artesia and Aviation, that, that there's no parking. Generally, the desire is not to have parking in front, but if you want to, it would, you have to go through an ADR process. And I heard two of you say you'd like a revisit, but you'd like to keep it on the strategic plan versus this action. Is that correct, Councilmember Obaji?
Yeah, I think we could just ensure we keep, keep, Artesia Boulevard permeates the strategic plan. It's like four items on economic development. So I don't think we're going to lose track of it, just keep it on, that this is a change we've made, we got to keep it on.
I think we could have a nice problem of, of not needing to focus on Artesia Boulevard with all of that.
That would be fantastic.
Did I miss any?
No, just on that question.
Oh, the, the not, the conflict between.
Yes.
Drive-throughs.
Drive-through. Yeah, we'll clean that up, it sounds like, you know, and we'll, and we'll create flexibility for those uses as well, consistent with the, you know, everything but residential effectively.
Someone want to make a motion to that effect?
Do we need a motion, or is it just direction to say?
Do you need motion on?
Well, I mean, it can't hurt. I think as long as you're all coalescing around those inputs, we'll, we'll massage those. The next step on this, just so you know, is the planning commission, they'll be reviewing it next Thursday night, they'll be providing their inputs. So we'll be bringing back a formalized ordinance for, for consideration of first reading and introduction following planning commission's review.
It's, for clarification, the frontage, okay on corner lots? I didn't quite catch that. What, why is that so? Is there, is that frontage parking? I heard something like, well, it'd be okay on corner lots. What's the distinction?
I'll let Mark comment on that, but I think the ADR will address.
The ADR will take care of all of that.
And the, and the general, the general preferences that we'll describe in the ordinance to dissuade that.
Perfect.
But we'll have the flexibility we need.
All right. So I'll make a, unless Councilmember Obaji was about to make a motion.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to that effect, what you heard from the mayor in the minutes can reflect, and our clerk is writing down. And I'll.
Did you get all that, Eleanor?
In, in its direction for drafting, anyway. So we're incorporating that into what'll come back to you. And of course, we may have inputs from the planning commission as well that we'll, we'll present to you when the time comes.
So it was remove parking requirements for non-residential uses along Aviation and It was pref, preferred parking behind the, the building. And if they'd otherwise like that, it would go through an ADR.
Which is administrative, an administrative design review process.
Not fronting, so it could be behind or under.
Right. Sorry about that. Make sure we bring into alignment the ordinances related to drive-throughs. And then what was your final one that you just added?
Yeah, drive-throughs and fast foods and to correct the current conflict concerning the, that prohibition in the first instance.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. And provide discretion for architectural design review if the prohibition on parking fronting Artesia Boulevard imposes a hardship or.
Oh, that's what. Yeah, we've got that. And the ADR is administrative design review in essence.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Okay, so you got that? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Before we vote, we'll take members of the public. I do have one card, Teresa Mitchell.
Hi, Council, thank you for listening, for hearing me. I am a resident of District Four, just three houses off Aviation. I'm also a, by, by education, a master's and bachelor's in urban planning and 30 years in land development. So I'm speaking as an industry professional as well as a resident. So I, I do support, like, the, the ACAP is fantastic. It was one of the deciding factors in when I bought my house five years ago, because I could see the potential in it. And I do support the, the reduce, reduction of the parking requirements as well as the zoning accommodations of the increase of FAR. But there's a couple of things that I'd like you guys to consider is, one, is that the, one of the, the brilliance of the ACAP is the comprehensive plan for the area that included some of the accommodations that seem to be not discussed in the parking ordinance. So what, the research is very clear that in order to make something, to make a neighborhood walkable to be successful, it's not just changing the zoning ordinance, but also to the smaller features like Councilmember Obaji has mentioned of the street frontage. So things like the long-range parking strategies, because it will, it's already with lavender honey coming into the neighborhood quite significantly, it's very noticeable. Somehow, some, having some kind of long-range parking strategy for employees and the impacts of the residents to be discussed and not just separate and pushed aside pedestrian accommodations, because it is about a quarter of a mile between, between crosswalks. So crossing Aviation and crossing Artesia is not easy. So you, you basically half the number of people who are willing to walk to that establishment, whether it's a restaurant or a store. So we need to make sure that those are accommodating. And then the placemaking features of the sidewalks, the bike, the, the bike stands that, you know, possibly can get incorporated into this ordinance and just not be separate. The second comment that I have is that there are significant differences between Aviation and Artesia that I think should be, there's physical differences, like the 60-foot right away versus 100-foot right away, and a 90-foot lot versus 130-foot lot, that does change the design significantly, and it also changes the way the public interacts with it. Aviation is currently competing with Pier Avenue. It's very easy to walk down to Pier Avenue, which does have all the accommodations that we're talking about. It has crosswalks, it has streetlights, it has nice seating, it has tree trees, and, and it is already walkable. So I think that there should be some kind of specifications, like looking towards Aviation as well, because we're in a, we're in a public space desert right there. There's no parks. And then the third thing is, is that the school district boundary lines requires kids to cross Aviation, both to go to, both the elementary schools, middle schools.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
Yes. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone from the public? That's the last card I had.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Leslie Campeggi, Redondo Beach. I think there's another consideration that you have to take a look at with the parking behind the building, and that is the business itself. How late is it open? Being a woman, I'm not going to want to park behind a building unless it's very well lit. So along Artesia Boulevard, what's behind those buildings? Residents. So now you would have lighting that might interfere with the residents' backyards or their windows. So I think safety and security is another consideration that has to be part of this factor. And maybe, again, depending on the type of business and how late it's open, you might want to be rethinking, should that parking be in the back? Or should it be in the front? Or should there be parts of the street that, that are businesses that have specific hours? I don't know how you do all of that in that expanse on, on Artesia Boulevard specifically, but I think those are some considerations that you haven't talked about yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Georgia Gantner, District Two. The other thing to think about is with parking is maybe when vacancies come up in lots, maybe every so often, every few blocks, there's an area just allocated for parking, which will take people off the street, even though we'll walk by and there'll be cars. But maybe it can be relegated to certain areas, people have to walk a couple of blocks. But, you know, if it's, becomes walk, you know, walking friendly, then people probably won't mind parking in a designated lot to get to where they need to go. The other thing is, it's not exactly parked, it's a little off the topic, but you had mentioned in one of your meetings about maintenance when you bring in landlords. I really think that's important, to have some kind of a compulsory, you know, requirement that says you must maintain up to a certain point. Because as nice of an area as the Coffee Bean is, with those other restaurants and their Blue Salt, I really like that area, the parking really needs to be, the parking lot really needs to be redone. So, and also to add some elements of greenery in there. They've got areas that they've designated for greenery where there's dirt, but no one's done anything. So who's responsible for that? Someone's got to be. And to make it in a nice way, but it's encouraging to everyone to have it more aesthetically pleasing, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Holly. You know, I've talked about this before, this, Holly Osborne. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. But parking in Artesia, I would like to know, when you took your parking survey, you said 2019, which, if any, stores were vacant at the time? Okay? Because recall, we also turned part of the Edison right-of-way into parking because there was not enough parking. So I don't know which stores, if there were any big stores that were closed then, and so obviously you missed, didn't have, it looked like we had parking available. Second, I want to talk about Grocery Outlet. None of you council members were on the council when Albertson's closed, and we were without a grocery store for three or four or five years. I can remember every District Five meeting starting with the people asking, have you found a new grocery store for us yet? And this was in both District Four and Five, because that store is on the boundary. The answer was always, not yet. South Redondo had lost two grocery stores at the same time, but then Mayor Aspel found tenants for those, smart and final. In North Redondo, we had nothing. Part of the problem was the store was a little smaller than what many grocery stores wanted. But as I remember, the biggest problem was an out-of-town landlord who was content to have an empty store because he or she was hoping the store would be zoned mixed-use, and the landlord wanted to sell it for more. Now, I'm, I believe also at the time, the landlord was still collecting rent. So she, all, I believe it was a she, was content to even let the parking lot just go to weeds and whatever. It was a mess, and none of you guys saw it. Maybe Mr. White did, but the rest of you weren't even here. Okay, but thank goodness the city did not zone it for mixed-use, or we would have never gotten a grocery store. Thank you, city. But I'm worried again, because if you upzone it and require no parking, is the landlord going to find a more lucrative tenant? We in North Redondo do not want a lucrative tenant. We want our grocery store. Now, since I've got 51 more seconds, I'm going to make some other observations. The other places I really use besides Grocery Outlet are the post office and the library. Before I came here tonight, I went to the library to print, okay? When I got there, I guess around four o'clock, there was only one space left in the library. I took it. And then the post office, well, sometimes it's full, sometimes it's not, but I also want to say what Leslie said about safety. If, if I'm going home and stopping at Grocery Outlet, I'm very glad that there's a corner lot and you can go in right off the street into a well-lit parking lot and straight into the store. I don't want to have to, you know, be in someplace that where I have to walk for blocks, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solomon.
Hi, Eugene Solomon, Redondo Beach. Just a quick question that I haven't heard addressed, but I'm sure it's something you all thought about when it comes to ADA state-required parking availability. Is that something that is part of the ADR, the additional design review? Is that something when it's going through plan check or design that, yes, we know that Is that something when it's going through plan check or design that, yes, we know that this type of business or this type of development requires X number of spaces for handicapped access and how that's going to interact with our ordinance or changes? So, thank you.
Hello, Jim Mueller again, District Five. I've spoken about this before, about Artesia Boulevard. The whole objective should be to get people on their feet and into the commercial area. And whatever you have to do, whatever code change you put in, you need to allow maximum room on the frontages so that there is space for people to gather and linger and browse through the commercial area. Right now, as I pointed out previously, Artesia feels very closed-in, in parts of it, like a tunnel with its fast-moving traffic on one side and a storefront on the other. You feel like you're very closed-in, like you're walking in a tunnel. Other parts of it, all you see is a big parking lot and then a bunch of fairly ugly strip mall frontages, which is not very good. I think it's very interesting that the utilization of the parking lots was barely 50%, if I understood the statistics right. So the example I want to give is why more space is needed on the frontage of Artesia Boulevard particularly is the art project that we've got going on with La Bass. La Bass says he will not recommend any art on private property. That means only art can be on public property. Well, how much public property is there on Artesia Boulevard? Not much. The sidewalk is fairly narrow. There's really, maybe you could put something in the median, but the whole objective of having art is to have people gather around it, for it to be a point of interest for people. And if you don't have space for that, then you cannot, you might as well not have any art. In fact, if you look what he was proposing, it's a bunch of benches and bicycle racks. I mean, really, that's not a, that's not a cause for people to gather around. So I'm telling you, I think that you have to keep the objective in mind of people. You want people in that commercial area, and whatever it takes, whatever design of the buildings or development that takes place, you have to have space for people to be in that commercial area on Artesia Boulevard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Couple things to mention that was interesting. Obviously, the ACAP plan is quite, I think it's been thought up really well, and we've actually applied some of the requirements in that and some of the projects we've put in the planning commission. One in particular was an automotive business that because of the ACAP, we were actually able to ask for a lot more improvements to the front of the property. I think it's something that really improves the area and will make it good long-term. One thing I wanted to mention, though, with regard to the plan, I know we're doing traffic and such, but there are some problems in some areas on Artesia Boulevard with regard to the residents having parking nearby, and I've talked to a couple of the council members about it. I know a lot of people live on Matthews in the 2400 block, for example. And if you don't know that, that's between McKay and Phelan. And in that area right now, there is a problem with the people who are using the businesses' parking on residential streets on Matthews right now. And there's a problem. For example, Brogino's, which rests around on the corner, great place, people park on Matthews and walk back over there. So you, I don't know how to best address that. That might be something in the future as projects come up, but just know that there are some residential areas that are being impacted right now. I know one idea, I talked to one of you about with regard to maybe restriping or putting parking spots, but the problem with that is there's a minimum requirement. So we'd make it bigger, so it would actually take away parking spots on Matthews. So again, I don't know what the ultimate solution is, but you already have some existing problems, so just know that that's something that we have to address in the future with, as projects come up. Thanks.
Anyone else wish to address the council on this item? Anyone online?
Yes, Kyle Johnson.
Hi, Carl Johnson, a resident of District One in Redondo Beach. I'm in favor of eliminating parking requirements for businesses on Artesia and Aviation, also in favor of banning front parking. I think it'll do a lot to revitalize the area and make it a more walkable and economically vital place to be. I would also encourage the City Council to consider infrastructure to make the area more walkable. Like others have mentioned before, things like bike racks, bike lanes, increased sidewalk widths, and more public spaces, maybe increased bus service and better bus service down these streets to make it so that people don't have to drive and don't have to park near their place of business for their trips. This would also help with traffic and make the area just overall a better place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Grace Peng.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm a District Five, my name is Grace Peng. I'm a District Five resident. I live just a few blocks off of Artesia, and I'm there several times a week on foot or by bike. And I want to make a plug for, what I want to tell you that they, right now, Artesia is a very unpleasant place to hang out. In fact, I rarely, except if I'm going to the library, I rarely hang out between Blossom and Aviation because it, there's no, when I bike there, and I always bike, I don't drive to Artesia Quarter. When I bike there, it's just really dangerous to bike on Artesia, and I normally take Matthews or Nelson, the one-way streets. But it can't, you can't do that between Blossom and Aviation. You know, we need to have protected bike lanes, at least in that area, because of the steep terrain, the discontinuous streets. We need protected bike lanes, and I think also with all the traffic collisions we're having at Aviation and Artesia, if we had protected bike lanes, that would narrow down the streets and force the cars, the motorists, to slow down. And that's another thing I wanted to say, which is that this area is really hot and it lacks greenery. Having front parking lots is just like this big asphalt urban heat island, making things worse. I really like the idea of making it more walkable and attractive, wider sidewalk, more trees, bike racks, a protected bike lane, and then we can, you know, the protected bike lane can be really pretty. We can landscape it with flowers or plants. We can actually add, we can add some public sculpture to the little greenery strips that protect the bike lanes. I think this will just, in New York City, they found that the streets that got protected bike lanes generate 49% more sales tax receipts than the streets that were slated to get bike lanes, but turned them down. So that successfully fought off the bike lanes, they actually successfully made themselves poor. I think we want Artesia to be economically vibrant, socially vibrant, so we should have protected bike lanes. And the other thing is about the noise and the speeding that's happening, especially after hours. Now, protected bike lanes force cars to slow down, and they make the area safer for people on all modes, including the people that would be crashing the cars. And noise, road noise goes down as, well, it goes up with speed, and so if you slow down the cars, Artesia will be a lot less noisy, and that road noise also goes down with distance from the cars.
Okay, thank you. Your time is up.
Okay. If you had the greenery.
So that concludes the Zoom, and you have three comments that support.
Okay. I'm going to caution the council that this was about parking, so they, some of those comments went pretty far afield, and I'd like to stick to what was on the agenda. So with that, is there anyone that wishes to reconsider the motion on the floor based on the public input? Okay, so you ready to call the vote? Okay. All four?
All right.
Is anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, City Manager items.
Just a couple this evening, Mayor. Want to give a shout out to the Police Department, in particular Kyle Loftstrom. You might have seen the police chief's post today on social media, but UCLA came to visit the department, in particular Kyle, and thanking him for all of the department's work for our blood drive where we were able to procure 84 pints of blood in our most recent effort. And we were, I believe, tabbed the 2025 Bruin Blood Bowl champion. So that's very good news. For those of you who have worked with Kyle over the years, you know he's quite persistent and dogged with this effort, and I have no doubt that his effort is saving quite a few lives in and around our community. So I thought that was something worth noting. And the other thing you might also have observed, if you've been paying attention to our website, we've undergone a bit of an update. We've added a new feature to each of our operating department's webpages. You might now see that there's a About the Director section associated with it. We're trying to humanize department operations a bit, and much to, at least a couple of our department heads chugren, we now have photographs and a little bit of a bio on each of our department heads, which make up our executive function here in the community. So there are still two pending photos for Public Works and IT. We'll have those soon, but do take a turn if you're curious about our team. Information's there about each of our folks. So just an effort to continue to modernize and update our website. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
Okay, well, please pass our admiration on to Kyle, and thanks for doing that. We appreciate it. I also wanted to note, you know, we just, this afternoon in our mail, got the first metrics out of Public Works and Planning out of the new online system, and I think that's a good step in the right direction.
Yeah, we're starting to see some performance data there. Really, really happy about that, something that's been a long time coming. And I'll be quite pleased to report to you on a full year-over-year cycle when we're there, but we are slowly working our way towards that goal.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to comment on the City Manager items? Okay, jumping down to item P1, Mayor and Council items. This is a continuation of our discussion on the rules of conduct and decorum and the ordinances that got changed as a result of that process. I don't think there's any new staff report. Did you want to say anything, Luke?
No, no, Mayor. We'll turn it over. I know that there's been some additional work, as was stated last, at the last meeting, Councilmember Barrett and Obaji volunteered to do some additional work. I know you were working very closely with you. I will say before you proceed, Mayor, big thank you to all of you. I know there were multiple hours of time spent looking at this document, several hours of conversation. I witnessed some of it, observed some of it, heard about some of it. So big kudos to all three of you, particularly Councilmember Barrett and the mayor, for all the hard work in advancing the document. I'm sure there'll be a bit of a presentation from the two of you on the updates, and we'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thanks. Well, to recap, which you just said after, at the end of our last meeting, the council agreed to let Councilmember Barrett, Obaji, and myself go through some, go through a rewrite, but input recommendations based on their first read of the document. And I do want to thank Councilmember Barrett for doing the lion's share of that work. I know I was on the phone with him for nine hours over the past few days, and I know he put in a lot of work, all the way up to just a few, a couple hours before this meeting. So thank you, Councilmember Barrett. Thank you, Councilmember Obaji. And I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Councilmember Barrett, since you were the one documenting the changes as we discussed.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thanks to the City Manager, who also participated together with Luke. We had input from the City Clerk's office, City Attorney's office. And I do believe we've advanced the ball. There's more to do, and we're here tonight to do it. But we have at least reached something of a consensus on at least where we are from Councilmember Obaji, myself, and the mayor, and what to present for further input and recommendations from the rest of the council and the public. And yeah, so the it is, we have the proposed City Council and Commission Rules of Conduct and Decorum. And then we have proposed amendments to approximately eight commission ordinances, including the Uniform Regulation of Commissions, which has been framed as the overarching applicable to all ordinance. We have some changes to the Public Work Safety and Sustainability Commission, Harbor Commission, Planning Commission, Budget and Finance, some non-substantive changes to a few of the other commissions and ordinances. So that is where we are. I think it may make sense, as the mayor pointed out and as Luke knows, Assistant to the City Manager, on Thursday, we submitted into the agenda a packet of materials, and what that packet reflects are proposed amendments in red lines to the existing ordinances, okay? The existing city ordinances with proposed red lines. That was Thursday. We continue to work through these since then. And for at least two of the documents, we have some additional proposed edits, and that would be to the City Council and Commission Rules of Decorum and Conduct and the Harbor Commission Ordinance. So I thought maybe we would at least start with those two, walk through it so that we can have highlighted, and I'm going to actually email this to the City Clerk and copy all councils as part of a blue folder, if I may. So I'll go ahead and do that at this moment.
Do you need a motion to receive and file?
Motion to receive and file.
Six.
All four?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
And Madam Clerk, if you could light up, I believe, 3A.
3A.
All right. So what I put up on the screen is the City Council Rules of Conduct and Decorum. It's a draft. But what we have in here is the work product that exists in the agenda packet, and I'll just scroll through. There have been some additional proposed changes, which you'll see in red, some of them non-substantive. And I'm just going to scroll through quickly. I'll stop on anything that, at least at this moment, I thought would make sense to discuss. You can see we've, to avoid duplication, we've defined who is the mayor earlier on in the document, and that allowed us to remove the references to the mayor and chair, mayor or chair. And there needed to be some distinction, as we discussed last time, because a chair in a commission, for example, is a voting member of the body, whereas here pursuant to our charter, the mayor is not. So that was why that dichotomy was in the agenda packet filed on Thursday. We've been able to define those roles earlier in the document, which allowed us to remove what is essentially now surplusage. So that has been done. You know, we've added a few qualifiers. You know, certainly each and every member of the City Council shall have the right and opportunity at a minimum to speak on and address each and every agenda item, including public comment on non-agenda items at some point during the time that each item is called before the City Council. And in the event a motion occurs on that item, every City Council member will have the opportunity, you know, to speak before it's wrapped up and done. And so we've just added in here, to the extent not prohibited by the Brown Act, right? I mean, if you're going to speak, circumscribed by the Brown Act. This is just an example. I see the City Attorney's here, and I know her and her office have committed to helping us scrub this and as we move forward.
Do you want to comment as you go through each area?
Sure, if something jumps out, that's what we're here for.
If you go back to page 10, right there, actually, a little bit further, the bottom part of page 10, where you've got a little bit about, at least I'm assuming that's the section, talking about members making comments on non-agenda items.
Okay.
Was it that one or is it the page before? I don't remember.
Yeah.
I've got to know, page nine and 10, somewhere in that area.
Okay.
Your page numbers changed a little bit.
They changed a little.
I just want to make sure that what's in there is indeed accurate to what the Brown Act has to say right there, that it's only, let's say, maybe you did change it there, about only clarification questions and not
Yeah.
comments or any kind of discussion. So I don't want to otherwise engage or briefly respond, because we definitely should not be responding to any non-agendized comments.
We shouldn't.
So I wanted to make, you may have changed it.
Well, it's in here. You could see it where I've highlighted right here with respect to public comment on non-agenda items, the government code. items, the government code that the Brown Act provides. You may briefly respond to statements. You may speak to, on your own initiative or in response to questions posed by the public by asking a question for clarification, making a brief announcement, et cetera. So that is included in here.
So I guess the only question would be, make sure the city attorney approves of whatever we have there, because I don't want to get in trouble with violating the Brown Act, because
We don't want to do that.
That's never a good thing.
Yeah. And I'll just mention, and I think it was brought up by a council member last time, and these are rules of conduct and protocol. It's a parliamentary document. It's not intended to create new rights, take away rights. It's the parliamentary procedures. How do we implement those rights with the mayor as the presiding officer of the meetings? And certainly with respect to everything in here, to the extent it is inconsistent, or as Councilmember Obaji mentioned, could become inconsistent with any law, charter ordinance, the law charter ordinance will prevail. So I'll just keep going along here, just to highlight what we've changed since Thursday. Again, self-explanatory things, we need not do on the fly here, but city clerk mentioned in the, for example, the commission meetings, there are no AB 1234 announcements, et cetera. But I'm just going to go through and see if we had any substantive changes in there. We did make clear, and I feel it's appropriate, ultimately council will have the decision to make, that the mayor should be able to make a BRR as somebody who does have some participation in our budget. I think it'd be helpful for the council to have the mayor involved in that. And so I've just made it clear that, or propose that, members of the city council or mayor may ask for a BRR. And, you know, I've also added in here, you know, with respect to BRRs, members of the city council and mayor, you know, we should strive to be judicious with respect to BRRs and cognizant of the time required for city staff to prepare them. Doesn't mean we can't ask for them, but it's just sort of a reminder, you know, BRRs require work and effort. So nothing substantive, more of a kind of a tip of the hat. And I will just continue through here. You know, there's a few items that are going to need further review, and this is actually from the Thursday agenda package. You know what, and city attorney, it's an item that we've discussed, we'll work on. You know, what happens when the mayor vetoes a vote denying an appeal? What happens if the mayor vetoes a vote approving an appeal? You know, so we have to work through that and figure out, you know, how those rules should work themselves out. Just going to continue to scroll through for substantive new changes from Thursday. You know, one I did put in here, and I thought the mayor had made a good point, which is when the mayor and the chair where is the, at least with respect to, you know, if we have to clear the room, if the chair presiding officer has to clear the room in an emergency situation or otherwise, the chair is able to do that, and the body, the council shouldn't say, wait, hold on, timeout, I'm not sure we should clear it. We have the chief of police here, or his or her designee is the sergeant-at-arms. So in that kind of emergency situation, you know, we would clear the room rather than calling a vote. That's a recommendation. Ultimately, the council will decide about that. And
No, go ahead.
Just a quick question. According to Roberts Rules of Order or Rosenberg's, well, how, what's the procedure in those? Do you know off the top of your head? For clearing a room, does it require a vote, or?
I think typically it's the presiding officer.
Just straight to the, okay.
Yeah.
I don't think it adequately addresses emergency situations.
Right, yeah, right.
Generally, the presiding officer runs the meeting.
Right, and can clear the
Stuff like that.
Right, okay.
Yeah, Roberts actually can't allow the presiding officer to declare a recess without a vote, can require, yeah, but we're not Roberts, we're Rosenberg's. But Roberts even allows certain bodies to not even have a motion to vote to end the meeting. It's like, just declared. So we have our own rules.
Okay. Now, what I did include is the ability, if I'm not acting and somebody's acting up, you guys can vote to force me to act. Or force the mayor, I shouldn't say.
You need the mayor.
Yeah. So those were the main changes, as you could see in red, and we'll see, you know, there's still work to be done here, but we wanted to get some work product back before the council to discuss. And so that's where we are with, at least with respect to the proposed rules. Before we move on to the next document, if anybody has questions, comments, or thoughts on what you saw in the agenda packet or what we talked about here, we could field those. Otherwise, we'll continue to work with the city attorney's office and what have you. So yeah, I see Councilmember Obaji up.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, both of you, Mayor and Councilmember Barrett, Mayor Protem Barrett, for your hard work on this. You definitely did the lion's work, and I appreciate it greatly, your attention to detail and your constant referral about these subjects. If you take a look at page four, I think, at least what's enumerated page, oh yeah, up there. Okay. City, where is California federal law? Okay, so what I was going to recommend is that change, to the extent any of these rules are or become inconsistent with, I wanted to say superseding California or federal law, because I recall from Webb's time that some California laws that apply to cities are not applicable to a charter city. And so it only supersede, only superseding California laws. So add that in, and then, and then it would become a, any such state or federal law shall take precedence.
That's a really good point.
That's all. I mean, that's just for my quick meaning. Sure.
Thanks. Okay.
Just, I think, a global change when you do your review, just to make sure that all of these changes were protected, because I think, you know, there were some, in particular, freedom of speech issues with the rights of commissioners to express themselves privately when they're not, you know, on the dais, that I think could potentially get the city into issues with freedom of speech and potential lawsuits. So basically, all of these will apply to, you know, prevailing law, federal, state, or whatever.
You're referring to the behavior as a representative of the city, but your free right, your right for free speech.
Exactly. When you're, you know, you're, it gets really murky, because you're, yes, you are a commissioner, for example, but if you say something, you know, on a Friday night, or say something online, it gets into freedom of speech. And so that could be a tricky area for us. And I know, just in general, that's a hot topic for city governments. And it's come up in a lot of our conferences and things like that with regard to, you know, the public. But, you know, it can be an issue as well for commissioners.
If you notice, though, that language changes when we get back to those, how you should act.
Right, right.
To much more open-ended. It's not like, you're fired.
Right.
Just like, remember, you're a representative of the city and behave as such.
Right, exactly. So, but I mean, again, you know, to city manager with Anzki's point, you know, the last time these were reviewed was 40 years ago. So if we're in 2065, will the mayor or council or
Forty-eight years ago.
How many?
Forty-eight years.
Forty-eight. You know, so I'm just thinking ahead to, you know, a different council, different mayors, you know, some sort of crazy scenario comes up, would these rules apply? And I think, you know, ultimately, it's going to be freedom of speech that would prevail. And I just want to make sure it's protected. The city is protected.
For sure.
Yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that, and I'm glad we have our city attorney here taking notes, listening, and I think that's going to be part of the review.
Did you see any issues with any of the language that he's referencing that would get us in a situation like that?
No, the behavior outside of council, we will add some language regarding to a freedom of speech issue.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I had a few things, a lot of them are relatively minor. The, I'm sort of going in order of page numbers, and obviously, they may have changed a little bit.
Are they substantive, or are they like wording changes, or?
Well, the ones I'm going to give you are the substantive ones.
Because the other ones can just submit.
Well, do I have a chance to speak, or?
I'm sorry?
Are you giving me a chance to speak here?
I am, I'm just, I'm just asking if they're substantive, or if they're just pen and ink, you know.
I'm not going to give you my typos, no, I'm not. So on the page, is page 12 of the original one, number six was talking about non-agenda items, and that's where the marketing speech comes in. And I'd like to propose that we create a community announcements section. I've got wording that if I boot up my computer, I can show you, if you want to do that now, or we can do that later. I was going to go through everything first, and then we can go back to that one. On page 22, talking about call the question, I think it needs to have something added that is subject to the earlier thing that you had in Section 3.2, where each and every member has the right and opportunity to speak on an item, because I don't want somebody calling the question. You know, I've spoken, and now I'm going to call the question, and nobody else gets to speak. So we have to make sure that all the council members have that opportunity before a question could be called.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And let's see, more of a smaller one, but we sometimes refer to Zoom in the rules and in the documents, and I think it needs to be more generic, teleconference, electronic means, something like that. And then my last comment was the one about the non-agenda items that I already brought up.
Okay.
So if somebody else wants to talk while I boot my computer, I can show you the language that I had for that section that I was talking about.
Just another global change. I know we made the correction to chair and mayor, because that actually empowered the chair of any commission and the mayor in any commission. I also had an issue where, in terms of the city council coming up with our plans, directing the city manager to execute those plans and working with staff and going out to commissions, in here we added that the city council, city manager, and staff can direct commissions. That was included in several paragraphs, where, you know, I think in terms of sort of the order of command structure, I mean, the city manager is acting at our direction and directs his staff, where they're not all at the same level. So I think, however, we want to correct that. That was another issue that I, because effectively, it gave them all sort of equal standing, sort of like chair and mayor did.
So how would you word it?
Basically, just at the direction of city council.
I don't think, that had very specific meaning, that we'd have to, for each of those cases, we'd have to direct it.
Right, well, I mean
But most of the agendas are made up actually by the liaisons.
Right, but they're, they're working, so
But we don't direct each agenda item.
But the agenda items are at the direction of city council meeting, where we have a strategic plan that we're trying to execute.
Right.
We work with the city manager, and then his staff goes out. That's the order, not, not in, on the same level. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
I do, and you have, did you see it in the rules of conduct in particular, or was that in the ordinances?
I think that was in the, I mean, it was probably in the ordinances.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. We'll take a look at that when we get to the ordinances.
Okay. There was one more. If you're ready, you can go ahead.
All right, 1A, if you could turn on 1A. So what I'm proposing is a community announcements section, and the wording I've got here, you can read it, I don't need to read it for you. And the idea would be to place this immediately after the presentations, proclamations, and announcements. Briefly, it's one minute per person, total of 10 minutes, for civic groups, schools, nonprofits to let us know what's going on.
Could you email that to the city clerk?
I can do that, yes.
I like the concept. The only concern that comes to mind for me is it's an extra 10 minutes on top of potential extra 30 minutes. Typically, we hear these as part of the public comment on non-agenda items. We seem to be getting all of that in right now. And so that's my, I love the concept and the idea. My only hesitation is it may just add more time. And as we know, each speaker may be limited to one minute, but there's the time of coming and going, which adds more time, so it may be more like 15 minutes or so. Those are just my initial thoughts. I'd like to ruminate on that a little bit and consider whether that should be included, as I think it currently is in our public comment on non-agenda items.
The reason why this was originally came up was because we have the new rule that talks about marketing. And this, the current rule would prohibit public comments on non-agenda items for these specific types of announcements. If a high school wants to let people know about a production coming up, a nonprofit wants to know people about something coming, NRBBA wants to tell us about something. The advantage of having a separate section here is it is limiting them to one minute, and so we don't have somebody who's going to ramble for three minutes in a public comment. So, yeah, I do understand, it can extend the meeting. But if we're going to prohibit them from speaking at one part, I have different language that I wrote, if we wanted to not do this and allow this kind of comment as part of public comment that I could also present.
Yeah, if you could. Are we, and I'm just trying to recollect, are we having an issue right now with a lot of marketing material and what have you during public comment? I mean, is
We haven't recently, but we do have some repeat, you know, almost every meeting. And we have had a number of people come up in one meeting. And the problem is, if they take their three minutes, and some regularly do, that's 10% of the time we've allotted for public comment. And it's supposed to be on items within our jurisdiction, which, you know, marketing and this stuff is not in our jurisdiction in general, generally. Councilmember Obaji?
What about when NRBBA comes up and they're advertising dinner on Artesia or Springfest? They're marketing those events, but they adhere to the benefit of the city and economic activity in the city. So those are, I mean, that's, is that prohibited conduct?
Well, I think then any business would benefit the city, right? Like, any car wash, any, so then anyone could advertise.
Occasionally, if a business opens on Artesia Boulevard, Grubhouse were to open, I'd say, hey, Grubhouse opened Artesia and McKay. It's here. That's awesome, you know, go, it's a neighborhood serving amenity. That would be prohibited now?
That's Well, we can say it, and we often do when there's new businesses in our area. But what you don't want is all 30 minutes taken up by, once you open a floodgate, every business in town's coming down and going, hey, we have a special on pizza tonight. Come on down.
So are we allowed to prohibit that?
Yeah.
Because now you're regulating speech based on the content, but I guess commercial speech.
I mean, it's, it's subject to someone challenging it, right? So it's based on your subject matter jurisdiction.
I would almost argue to take that line out about the market, just because it hasn't recently been an issue, and we all do like
Not an issue.
Right, we've all, we all really like the community announcements. I mean, I think we're all in agreement. We, all of the organizations that come up, and, you know, we haven't had any straight commercial businesses come in, I mean, recently. I don't
Neither have I. And I think you put your finger on the solution, together with the mayor, which is, if, you know, if it comes to it, we, as part of the announcements, council member announcements, I want to announce the NRBBA, I want to announce, you know, whatever it may be. So we're able to amplify that ourselves, you know, as representatives of the community. And that is an additional outlet for those organizations that may want to speak to events that, you know, are quote unquote, outside the jurisdiction. So, I mean, the city manager's here, he's been here a long time. Any thoughts on this? Do you feel like this is?
My initial thought is we're, we've got a solution in search of a problem, candidly. I mean, you know, I know, if you look at it, and I know the genesis of this change, the conversation of market, potential marketing, different types of community groups, we really haven't struggled with this. We've sat through a lot of public comment on non-agenda items. Sometimes those things have strayed out of our jurisdiction, there's no question. But it hasn't been excessive. The council, this mayor, have done a good job regulating this particular period of time to 30 minutes. There was a time when we did, we weren't so perfunctory on that. They would slip to the 45, 60-minute type of commentary. You haven't really had to deal with this in a negative way. If you, if we create a new section on an announcement basis, I think we're just adding to the conversation. I think we're better off to just continue to keep it inside of the initial 30 minutes and to provide the flexibility that we've provided in the past. I don't know how, I don't know how we would immediately regulate marketing versus a civic group, or how would we immediately understand whether a group is a 501(c)(3) or a business. It would be very difficult for us to, I think, to differentiate in the moment. And so we effectively would end up allowing all comments, really.
Or none.
Or none at all. And so it's, I think this group wants to probably allow some comments, not none.
But let me short trick this. I mean, based on what I'm hearing, let's just take marketing out of the prohibited things and non-agenda items and not make this difficult. I do question, you know, we are, we are doing good at cutting off at 30 minutes, and we have cut off at 30 minutes. Not in the last couple meetings, but previous meetings, we have cut off.
Oh, it was necessary.
So you wonder what valid jurisdictional comment did we cut off by allowing marketing that has nothing to do with the city? But I'm willing to let go of the point, so. So let's just.
Alternative is to allow two-minute public comments on non-agenda items.
Because then that created a problem. In the, what was the ICA conference we were talking about this? And once you get really below three minutes, it starts to cut into it and.
Where it only allows one minute, you can barely get a concept down.
I think just eliminate the line.
Let's just stick with it as is, if you guys are okay.
I would withdraw this entirely. And then the only comment I would have would be to move up public comment after the mayor's proclamation, proclamations, commendations, et cetera. So the public comment is earlier in the meeting.
I like that idea, if I may, Mayor. My only concern is for the, you're talking about moving it before consent calendar. My only concern with that is on consent calendar, we often have a lot of city staff here, ready and prepped to go on their consent calendar. You know, we have whole groups, the whole left side of the auditorium is usually filled. And if we move the public comment on non-agenda items in front of that, then we have all these staff folks who are demanding to be back here first thing in the morning, waiting. And they're happy to wait, they will wait. I'm just concerned about the efficiencies and making sure this operational team is most efficiently deployed. And it's the very next item. We're not talking about putting.
And there's a limit to it.
And there's a limit to it. And we often move through quickly, like tonight, I think it was just bam.
15 minutes.
Yeah.
I noticed, I wrote it down.
I, I like the idea, just in practice, I'm concerned that making that change will have a negative impact on our operational staff. And it's just one item to wait. So I'd prefer to keep it how it is for those reasons. Those are just my thoughts.
Councilmember Obaji?
Maybe we could cap the number of mayoral proclamations to like 10 per month.
Wow. You don't like celebrating?
This is a joke, but.
I only have one feeling that you just heard it.
Wow.
How do you feel about moving it up?
No, don't, I agree with.
Let's just only have complaints in the chamber. This is just a complaining zone, not a celebration zone.
Councilmember Kalajervich, where do you stand on this?
About having celebrations?
Moving up the public comment before consent calendar.
I mean, I see both sides of it. I, I think it's been working well with our limit to public comment. And so, again, this could be a situation, if there's an issue, we can adjust it. But I think we're doing pretty well. And that's also something for us to consider as we're pulling items, that we do have public comment right after. So people are waiting, and so we should be cognizant of the discussion and maybe have some of that ahead of time, if possible, you know, with staff, so.
Good point.
Councilmember Castle.
To councilmember Barron's point, I think as it's currently arranged, it's probably the best, just given, again, the amount of staff time that's waiting to speak on their items on the consent calendar. Yeah, I know sometimes those, that can be a long period of time, depending on what's in that consent calendar and what's, what gets pulled. But I think recently, we've been able to pretty efficiently move through it quickly, so that we can get to the public comment. So I'm fine with where it is right now.
And I think, you know, approve the order of the agenda. If we see that there's going to be a lot pulled in the consent calendar, we could move to move.
Right.
To move the.
If we have a lot of people in the public here, you know, we may adjust as well.
So I, I tend to, I think, seems to me like the consensus.
Consensus is spoken, I get it.
To keep it where it's at.
You don't need my presentation up anymore either. Thank you.
That's it on the rules of conduct? If there's any other items, and we'll be back.
Did you have more?
No, I just have, you know, little typos and spellings things, but that's it.
And how should we get our comments, like the small comments, to you? Or how will that work?
So there's a, you know, one option is we're going to be back, we're going to make some more changes after tonight, based on what we've just discussed. And the next time this is in, you'll get it likely on a Thursday again. And you'll have that four days or so to provide those additional comments in advance of that, if not tonight. And city manager, I don't know if you have additional or different thoughts on that procedure?
No, I think we'll, we'll evaluate where we're at after we have the commission's, I think, discussion. But we're probably bringing this back, I'm thinking October 7th, as the next conversation, as opposed to next week. I don't, I don't think we want to keep the, there's been a lot of hard work done over the last week. I think we want to probably give our editors here a little bit of a break. But I will say, if there are, if there are substantive policy recommendations you want to make, we should probably put those out on the record, you know, publicly, rather than to provide those edits serially through email. So I think typos, typographical changes, et cetera, I think those are comments that you can share.
Per the Brown Act, you can share those directly with.
Well, no, that's my concern. I don't really like.
My recommendation is for those kind of things, send them to me and Luke, and we'll incorporate them.
Yeah, as they come forward. If there are policy issues, I think you want to get them on the record publicly.
Right, okay.
Yeah, okay.
If you're okay with that, councilmember.
Yeah, that's fine.
Councilmember Kalajervich, anything? Okay, and councilmember Obaji left us, so we're assuming he has none, so let's move on.
And if he has any, he'll let me know. All right, well, let's move to the harbor commission ordinance. I'll get that up on the screen. That would be, yep. Okay. So in the agenda packet, you saw the blue lines for the harbor commission ordinance. That was Thursday between then and now. The mayor and I took a closer look at this and are recommending some additional changes. Some of them are non-substantive. For example, all commissioners need to be residents, and we'll make sure that's clear in the uniform ordinance regarding commissions. A few things that were, and again, so we've removed the reference to, you know, a qualified person is a resident. That will be part of the overarching uniform. We're proposing, in addition to these categories, some of these new categories you saw, for qualifications that would allow somebody to be on the harbor commission. We're proposing to add back in a few that were taken out last time. So you'll see here in red, these are qualifications from the existing ordinance that would allow somebody to be eligible to serve on the harbor commission. Doesn't guarantee them a seat, doesn't require the mayor to select them in the first place, or a city council to approve them. So we figured to add those back in, provide more flexibility. And none of these did, we think, you know, absolutely on no circumstances should somebody with this qualification be prohibited. So we've added them back in.
If I may jump in here, there's one change that I was not.
I'm going to get to that at the end. Are you talking about this?
This one.
This one?
This one.
Okay, please, Mayor.
There's one change that I was party to with the discussion with councilmember Castle, but I couldn't reveal to you. And that is where you moved the district to, or lives adjacent to the harbor.
Yes.
Down to the, the list of others that could be considered. Where before it was up in the top four. And I was okay with that, but I think councilmember Castle would like to see that.
Sure.
And maybe I'm speaking for you now that you can read it.
So, I'm sorry, so you're, say what you just said again.
Well, originally, if you look at the one that was before us last time, I said resident in district two. That's been changed to someone who lives in close vicinity. But it's been moved from the top four, which are, these are the four, you know, these you shall have, down to, here's a list of things for the remainder. And you had expressed to me that you wanted that as one of the top things. So that's what I'm pointing out to you, since you didn't have time to read this.
Right, so, yeah, so that we have someone, you know, from the land side of the harbor. And again, to those who aren't familiar with this, down at the harbor, there are lots of different perspectives on the water. Lots of the, the, you know, laws and things that we pass here impact the harbor different ways, depending on if you're on the land or if you're on the water. So I think having that perspective is very important on here. And then also, I think that was the only geographic requirement that I wanted to have, is someone who lives adjacent to the harbor. I know in the past, we've had difficulty filling the slots just based on experience. And now we're sort of allowing, you know, someone to sort of switch their bucket or their category of position that they're filling. Where in the past, you weren't able to do that. If you were the boater, you were always the boater as long as you were on the commission. But in a previous draft, it also laid on that, I mean, you had to be from every district in the city. And I think that would just be really almost impossible.
Well, that's in here, it's the very last sentence, is where practical each city council district should be represented by at least one harbor commissioner, with qualifications prioritized over district residents.
And we do have current harbor commissioners from various parts of the city. And a lot of the boaters and tenants down at the waterfront are non, even non-redondant residents. But I think, you know, putting that in just restricts us even more. I mean, with these experience categories, I think just finding the best person who's, you know, in district two or works in construction, I think that's the priority.
Right now, it's number seven is the adjacent. So where does that get moved to?
Well, I may be able to answer the question. So on your, they're good points. So on your observation about qualifications should be prioritized among residency, an effort should be made to find somebody from each district where practical. For example, I don't, I don't know if there's someone from district five who's applied, or, so we've included that here. Where practical each city council district should be represented by at least one harbor commissioner, with qualifications prioritized over district residency. So if you have somebody from district five who maybe doesn't seem that qualified, even though they fall into one of these categories, hey, I'm going to count it. It would be within the discretion of a mayor to appoint that person or not.
Almost in a rubric.
It's like a rubric, yeah. So that flexibility is in there, not mandating one from each district.
Okay.
Can I maybe interrupt on this notion of adjacency? I was just conferring with, with the attorney's office here. One thing we want to be, and this language struck me when we talk about most directly impacted by and benefited from. We, we do want to make sure that adjacency doesn't include somebody inside of 1,000 feet of the waterfront because of potential conflict issues. And they might then have to abstain from participating in CUP, you know, type of action. So that's, you know, I understand the intent of this. Obviously, it makes sense, they're impacted, we want them to be mindful and have effectively a stake in this. But we wouldn't want to immediately create a conflict for somebody when they consider matters before the harbor commission, where they would have to recuse themselves.
Thank you for that, thank you, city attorney. And I'm glad we're going through this exercise. It's a great idea. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem like it's going to work, because it creates an inherent conflict.
They still could come from district two, but they just couldn't be adjacent.
You want to keep them outside of 1,000 feet, preferably.
Well, I have a different perspective on that. I mean, not one person may have to recuse themselves, but there's still six other commissioners.
That's true.
And it's only on actions that are.
It would be only on quasi-judicative actions.
Quasi-judicial.
Where they would potentially impact residents.
Residents, residential value.
Correct.
It's a pretty slim.
Could be. I mean, but if you're talking about an LCP amendment to the entire.
Yeah, if it was like the waterfront again, then, yeah, they'd have to recuse themselves.
It'd just be something probably you as the appointing authority would want to think about. Yeah, right.
And one potential fix would be a person who lives adjacent to the harbor, yet outside of 1,000 feet from the jurisdiction of the commission.
Is it 1,000 or 500?
Well, I think maybe Cheryl can speak to it. But I think at 500 or less, it's, you're immediately conflicted. I think it becomes an arguable scenario between 500 and 1,000. So typically, we would advise that they recuse if there's a direct impact or benefit to their property, so.
That's just advice, they don't, they're not mandated to do so.
I think between 500 and 1,000, it would be advisory, but it does create liability for the city potentially.
And I think that's the issue, because then we're, we're depending on a commissioner to do the right thing, right? Then in that situation, if they don't, we have liability.
Right, and I agree, and I know the mayor's taking notes. So by adding in the qualifier, adjacent to yet outside from 1,000 feet of the.
Central conflict zones, or however you want to phrase it.
Could we include a map with this?
Yeah, we got a map in.
No, I mean, when it goes out, so that people see where that exclusion zone would be.
Oh, the exclusion zone map, yeah, we could do that. We got the jurisdiction of the harbor commission, then we have the exclusion zone. I think that could be put together. And I do like the idea of having somebody who's in that area, the land side, as you say, to at least be an option for a mayor to nominate and for a council to select. My only concern about having them as a, that person is a fixed requirement, that it's locked in. It's like you have to have somebody within 1,000 feet. I think a mayor in consultation with district two and district one would find somebody. It's just.
I think that that's important. I mean, just, I think it's, is it Marina Del Rey? That, one of the, one of the marinas doesn't have any boaters on their commission. And that's obviously a problem.
Okay.
This would be the opposite. I think we always need a boater, we always need someone from the land side.
Okay. And so the way it's written right now, and you may have seen it, one mayor shall be a sailboat or powerboat, that's the boater. One is a name selected from a list of names from any commercial harbor or peer association. That's a little bit of a land side. And then, you know, you have all of these other potential designations and qualifications that would allow someone to be appointed. It sounds like what you're asking for is it's mandatory that one of the seven seats be filled by this person for the.
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
From the land side. And the harbor and peer associations, so those are mostly businesses. So that's not a resident, like, not a homeowner, not someone dealing with traffic, coming in and out of the, you know, waterfront, things like that. So that's a little bit different perspective that a peer association, King Harbor person would bring versus, you know, someone who lives on Beryl and PCH.
And would you want that, and that would be their qualification? It would be the adjacency to the harbor outside the conflict zone? And not any of these other items? So they could, they, you know, they may not be a CPA or an oceanographer, they may just be a resident? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, obviously, I would want someone who has an interest in the harbor and working with the harbor. But I think we do need that person who is a resident, who's on the harbor.
Okay, and that could come from district one or two, since they're both adjacent to and 1,000 feet from.
District one.
You guys will have to fight that out.
Yeah, we'll fight it.
I'm just, you know, thinking out loud, is there some downside to that? Do we then create?
And then what, how do we define, like, land side? Can we go like? I'm thinking. Then it's Anita and Prospect? Or Anita and PCH? Like, where's, where's our land side boundary?
How far out?
What is adjacent?
I mean, that's why, I mean, district two and. I mean, that's why, I mean, District Two, and to get 1,000 feet out, you're probably, what, at PCH?
No, not quite.
How far, probably?
Yeah.
About. Broadway could be 900 feet, but I've been looking at it.
Well, it'd be from the edge of the zone, so think about Redondo Beach Hotel, so.
Like roughly Broadway, between Broadway and-
Could, I mean, 1,000 feet, yeah, yeah, PCH probably.
So basically beyond that.
Like Cozy Cafe is a little over 1,000 feet.
Yeah, that's PCH. But, you know, just for example, like if you're, we're, um, talking about, um, coastal commission things like boat ramps and things like that, how do those boats get into that area? What's that going to do to traffic on surface streets? That's where the resident-
Truck routes, boat routes.
Truck routes, you wanna talk about? Right, I mean, those are the sorts of things that having that land person, where the people on the water were just like, oh yeah, we wanna go around.
What may make the difference, if, if I could, Mayor, is how, if we're able to, as a practical matter, prescribe this, define it. Like, what is really adjacent, yet outside 1,000 feet? Does it end at Anita or 190th? And if we can't do it geographically, is there some other way to get somebody who's land side, not water side? Um, and yet comes in kind of a, still maintains their objectivity and doesn't feel like, well, I'm on here to shut down everything in the harbor or something like, you know, it, it gets a little dicey. I, I don't know, Mr. City Manager, you've, any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think I like, I, I think maybe we drop the word adjacent and we, and we use the word, we, we lead with close proximity to, um, and maybe most regularly and directly impacted by operations and development of harbor without being in conflict. You know, we, we do the disclaimer, and then that's probably enough.
Okay.
And then, and I think the mayor obviously knows, you know, as the appointing rec, you know, person recommending, there's a commitment to try to find someone in District One or Two that meets that qual and is sensitive to the impact.
Right.
I don't think we have to over-describe it. I think maybe, maybe less is more here, because I think we know what the intent is.
That's the, any thoughts on potential unintended consequences of doing this? Um, either making it a must-have position versus-
I mean, I look at this, I mean, I think what you're all doing globally here is expanding the set of pre-quals rather than contracting. Our issue has historically been a very limited-
Limited.
Option. You've got plenty of options here, you've got your out clause with, to the extent practical, so you don't have to necessarily meet each and every one of these every single time. Um, I, I think the intention of making sure that you've got somebody that, that experiences the impacts of the waterfront who, from a residence perspective, rather than a boater's perspective, I think that's kind of what this is meant to do. Makes some sense. Uh, but, but, you know, Camley, that's what the role of the commission is in general. Is everybody on the commission is meant to really look at it that way, you know, ideally, or at least, uh, consider that. So I think you're okay with this as long as you make it a little more generic and then you have the out if needed.
And, and the out would have to be added to this first part.
Is this, so this is still very prescriptive then, right?
Appointments of commission shall be in accordance with the following. One member shall be a sailboat, powerboat. One member may be selected from a list of names. And then this would be, one member shall be in close proximity. So to, I guess we could say to the extent practical. It would be, you know, if we were to put the person of close proximity as a required seat, we may at least for this one, wanna say to the extent practical or with, within discretion or something. Because your point's well taken, everybody on this commission, I know the mayor's been sensitive to it, should have the interest of residents who live there in mind. I mean, that's kind of built in.
I mean, you may want the, you may want to the extent practical for all of them potentially. I mean, there could be circumstances where, you know, you've tried and there isn't somebody that, that meets those quals. I mean, I, I don't know how that would, so it looks like the two would be perfunctory and then the rest of these would be, you know, priority. So, I mean, imagine it would be easy to find somebody that meets one and two, so practical would probably be always, but, um-
I, I, I mean, to date, it's not been a problem getting Districts One and Two.
Represented.
People, I mean, there's nobody from any other district on there right now. And that's not from trying.
I have District Three.
Lisa.
District Four person.
Lee Caller.
Oh, Lee.
And-
I'm sorry, I'm thinking about-
Roger Carlson.
RC.
There's a District Four resident, there's the attorney.
But it's never been a problem getting one and, one or two.
But there could be a problem getting A or B, in any given cycle.
Never had a problem getting a powerboat or sailboat owner. And we already have an out for the second one.
Do they have to be an owner or, or a regular user?
Regular user.
Because owner, uh, I'm not sure we've all, I can think back, I'm not sure every commission we've had over the last 20 years has had an owner.
Oh, I think we have.
Yes, we have.
An owner?
That's not been a problem. In fact, you know, we have a lot of owners.
Now, B, B, we recently had trouble with, but this, I think, extends it.
This already has its out clause, it says, or select a member at large.
So that one has an out?
Mm-hmm. Originally, I had four prescribed, this is down to two. And if we added a District Two, then that would bring it back up to three.
But you'll be, you'll have no trouble getting that, I think.
Yeah, I, I think you wouldn't have trouble, because there are lots of boaters in District Two and who also live there, so I don't think it would be difficult.
Well, so I think it's important to have. Is there a consensus on this, or?
I'm, I'm all right with that.
I'm sorry?
I'm okay with it, with what we've, with what we've been talking about here.
With the mandating, uh-
District.
Nearby, how will we figure out the right terms for close proximity?
With the buffer zone.
Yeah. And you're obviously there.
Yeah.
Councilmember Obaji?
No problem with what we got going here.
Like what we're talking.
Adding the third.
And Councilmember Barrett?
I mean, I've expressed some concerns that we've talked through. Um, maybe we could, yeah.
But the broader consensus seems to be to put it back in.
Yeah, as a mandatory.
And we can put it in and then we can debate it again.
All right.
And I don't wanna spend too much-
Let's not spend too much time, thanks for bringing it to it.
Think about what it could be altered, how you might alter it to make it palatable.
If you guys have ideas, you can send them to me and I can, but I have some ideas too, so.
All right. Okay, I'm just gonna, thanks for-
Is that who the drafter is from here going forward?
It's gonna stay the same way.
Well, I think to the extent that people are mailing stuff, it has to be me or Luke.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has to be done in this meeting if otherwise.
Yeah.
Right in between you two.
I-
We're getting out in the meeting the things now, if there are small typos or what have you, send them to the mayor or, and/or Luke. Big substantive things, we'll talk through now and then we'll be back October 7th.
Correct.
So that will, that would help to keep it.
And you could send your right recommendations for the big stuff to me, or we can talk them and-
Yeah, my, we'll get to it at the end. My preference is to keep the structure we have, I think it's been very productive.
I just, we just can't get the pen and ink stuff directly to you.
We're getting it tonight, fortunately.
No, there's, I think there's other pen and ink stuff we'll be getting.
Yeah, if we, and if we can get a draft, a revised draft before Thursday night, that would be even better.
I'll try to get it before Thursday, yeah.
Could we put something on the agenda, just?
If you wanna continue this discussion-
Not to talk, but just to-
No, no, we-
Put it out to the public so that then we can move forward.
Sure, we can have this exact same item next week teed up for you if you'd like. I just don't wanna keep putting pressure on the two of you to do this.
No, that's fine, let's do that, you've seen it, come back, get a few more comments, go from there. All right, I'm, I'm gonna keep, and that makes sense, I'm gonna keep scrolling along. Um, okay, so here, um, you know, these are things the harbor commission's doing, doing well, advising the council on commercial and recreational development. After speaking with the mayor, I agree, you know, let's take out the ones so requested by council. Let's just have them do it. They've caught a lot of really good things in the harbor, they've been an asset and helped, uh, uh, Cap Mahoney, who was here the other night with the harbor commission, I thought did a terrific job explaining and interacting. So I, I propose we take out when so requested and, and let the commission do what they've been doing. Um, with respect to, um, uh, general plan amendments, rezoning and local coastal programs, uh, the commission should be informed. Um, this is something they dig into and may have good ideas. And in fact, uh, I agree, they, they should review and the coun- and advise the council unless otherwise directed by the council or city manager or staff, and, and there's reasons for that. Uh, one item I do wanna propose changing after speaking with the mayor a little further is right here. Um, and this has to do with, uh, the commission reviewing and advising on vacancies and leasing or subleasing trends in the harbor. Since we, they are currently doing the, uh, being advised on, uh, new and assigned leases, and they may recommend on new and assigned leases and sublease arrangements with the city relating to harbor lands, facilities and improvements in their jurisdiction. We might as well have them, um, also, uh, uh, review and, and advise the council concerning their findings, otherwise they're just kind of bottled up and, uh, and the commission will never hear about it, so, and, uh-
So you delete at the request of the-
Yeah, I'll, I'll switch, I'll-
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
That was my one bone, remaining bone of contention.
I'll work it, I'll, you know, change it to, you know, periodically, they shall review and advise the council. Um, certainly I'll take out, I think.
I think may advise is fine, it's just-
All right, so I'll make, I'll make the change along the lines we just discussed, you're welcome. Same here, uh, this is a change from the Thursday night agenda packet. So instead of at the request of council, we'll have the commission advise us on their concerns and recommendation regarding the land side and water side operations within their jurisdiction. And, uh, you know, after conferring with, uh, those involved, uh, it makes sense, including the mayor, for the commission to continue to receive those periodic reports from the harbor master, uh, or harbor, harbor patrol and police on incidents, responses and crime in the area of the, uh, commission's jurisdiction. And the same with respect to, they may make recommendations to us based on what they hear, so. I thought that'd be a good idea to propose that. And that's it for the harbor commission, um, so.
Anyone else have cha- I'm sorry?
No, please, go ahead.
Anyone else have changes you'd like to recommend?
I have a, a comment, love to hear feedback. Um, one of the qualifications was about a boater paddleboarder as a qualification. Um, we are introducing new uses in the harbor. It's new, um, uncharted at this point, so maybe a little premature, but we're introducing water polo as a use in the harbor. Um, would-
Duffy boating.
And what?
And Duffy boating.
What, what is that?
Duffy boating.
An electric boat.
A little electric boat.
You know, and, and I bring this up only because-
Duffy boater paddler or water poloer.
Very good.
Oh.
No, go ahead.
So I, this is something new that's evolving, and who knows that it, it may become something that is, you know, seasonal, four months out of the year, but significant use of our harbor. Should that be considered as a qualification in the future?
How about if we take a cut at rewriting six to, to allow that?
Frequent.
I propose a frequent, um, waterfront recreator.
Frequent.
A frequent Redondo Beach waterfront recreator, or I guess harbor.
Non-boater, that's best.
Harbor recreator.
Frequent and regular recreator of the harbor and surrounding harbors, including, wouldn't have to say including, but the idea would be including hand-paddled watercraft, Duffy boats, et cetera.
Would regular imply that they have to do it throughout the year or regularly in the summertime?
I think we're overthinking that.
Within the season, I mean-
And are you gonna lead with a person, right, because you've defined a person?
Sure, good point, a, a person who is a frequent and regular recreator.
Well, and one of my issues with, you know, getting too specific about what type of recreation, um, part of what's coming out of like these event committees, we have water polo now, we have some potential other events that might come up, so, you know, there are other uses that could be coming to the harbor area, but having somebody, uh, other uses and types of events that could happen in the water, it's going to be important to incorporate that.
I think it's important to distinguish recreation.
The intent here was to get the non-boater-
Yeah.
Right, aspect of people who use the water.
Non-boating recreation use of the harbor.
Yeah.
Fishers also should count here.
Well, if they're in a boat, they're, they're already counted. You're right, it could be a sport fishing boat, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, recreational use.
Good idea, non-boating is just-
Well, we'll take a cut at that, understand what you're saying.
Yes, and we can spend the next week thinking about the right words, but I think that's a good concept.
What if you regularly skate at the skate park?
Dude.
Water, water-related.
Okay, water-related.
Skateboarding's not a crime.
But it doesn't have to be represented. It actually was a student that came down here that started that whole thing. Keep that to the left.
Okay, anything else?
No.
I think that's it for now.
Councilmember Law, Councilmember Obaji?
No, I just, uh, when you, you keep the phrase frequent and regular, because if it's seasonal, it's not gonna be that frequent.
A season won't come up with that one.
Yeah.
Good point, okay.
Let's face it, most people use the harbor during the summer, it drops a lot during the winter. Was there anything in, uh, um, the overarching ordinance that you wanted to-
Well, I'm gonna, I pulled that up right now, Mayor, the uniform regulations. Um- So everything in here is in the agenda packet.
Where did we end up on monthly?
Yeah, so the, the issue that came up in our discussions is right now, the ordinance, the overarching ordinance requires commission meetings to be held monthly. Those monthly meetings may be canceled, but only at the meeting immediately proceeding and only upon a vote of the commissioners. An issue that's come up, it's come up on the planning commission, I think I've seen it before, is the liaison for the commission says, hey, we're gonna have a meeting in 30 days, I got some great stuff coming, or we're gonna have, we have an applicant, what have you. So there's no need to cancel anything. But lo and behold, a week before that meeting, the applicant says, hey, our representative can't make it, and all of a sudden, the commission doesn't have regular business or, uh, to call the meeting. And so, you know, it seemed to make sense, hey, give the staff liaison flexibility to cancel a meeting later at the direction and with the approval of the city manager. The, the rub, if you will, the friction is, well, could there be a situation, and I don't think, you know, the staff we have now would do it, but could there be a situation, maybe it's happened in past years, where staff liaison just starts canceling meetings because they don't wanna come in, or there could be a problem, um, or you, you end up with somebody who's, you know, running the city and, and not giving an opportunity for commissioners to meet at all. And we've heard from the public on that, we had, I think, Mr. Marocco, that was one of his issues potentially. So that's, that's sort of the dichotomy there, that's the, the decision point. So that, that's kind of what we've been grappling with. I don't have a recommendation on that, I know Councilmember Obaji's been looking at it. I, city manager may have thoughts, so I-
Well, and I've spoken to a couple of you about this, I, I actually think this issue has subsided tremendously with the council's consolidation of commissions, the efficiency now within the structure we have today, and the fact that we have commissions that now have a substantive workload, and they actually do need to meet regularly and virtually every month. So there is, there are rare occasions now where we would need to cancel the meeting for lack of business. Uh, in an ideal world, that, that discussion or cancellation or of the next meeting would occur the night of the existing meeting, right? Like at the conclusion of the meeting, hey, we thought we were gonna have something going next month, unfortunately applicant's not available, we're gonna need to push that off, you know, 60 days. So my recommendation as liaison would be that we not meet next month and we come back together the following month. You know, that, I think, is allowed for in the current conversation. Effectively, the commission then could say, we're gonna cancel, although it's not expressly written that way, it still talks about quorum rather than lack of business, but if, if we, but, well, actually, no, I guess it can be at that point, yeah, that's great, that it is there. So then, that's the ideal circumstance. The, the only thing that's not necessarily covered in the current language, and again, I don't, we're fine operating under the current construct. I have no, I'm not, I'm not pushing this. But just to provide this, there is a scenario, let's use the planning commission, where we have every intention of the next meeting occurring. There's been a notice hearing, what, what have you. And perhaps the applicant, after the meeting has concluded, a couple of weeks later, maybe two weeks before the actual scheduled date says, I gotta, I gotta push this off a month. My presenter's not going to be available. Please reschedule and re-notice the hearing for the following month. Well, as it, as it occurs today, our liaison would call the commissioners and say, hey, applicants requested a rescheduling. We ought to push the item. We're going to need to post a notice of termination. We don't really have any other reason to meet. You know, I assume you don't want to come if there isn't business, or are you going to come or you're not? So effectively, you, you work it down to where the commissioners say, hey, I'm not going to be there. So now you cancel due to lack of quorum, when in reality, you're, you're effectively needing to cancel due to lack of business. So there isn't really an express out in the language for that circumstance currently. There's a, there's a bit of a workaround that I think is in consultation with the commission, which may be the preference because it requires effectively liaison to dialogue on a calendaring basis with the rest of the members of the, of the commission. But it isn't very clean in that sense. I certainly, you know, we, we certainly value the commission's input and our, our current staff are supportive of, of that regular occurrence. I don't see us having this risk, but I understand, given the past, you know, past, there could be circumstances where you'd have different liaisons, different city managers who might view things differently. So I think you're wise to maintain some control and some specificity to this. But you may want to at least contemplate how you, how we would deal with such an occurrence and whether or not that's expressly permitted here.
Councilmember Kalajevic.
I would just suggest that I don't, I don't think we're having an issue now with business for commissions now that we've consolidated, as you mentioned. But for us to kind of keep tabs on things, making sure that commissioners are having, you know, opportunities to, to make an impact in the community. I, I think it would be fine if we were noticed for any cancellation. I mean, as a council, if we were noticed for, you know, if, if it was lack of quorum or if it was lack of business, just so we're aware of what's happening on the commission. So, you know, do we need to prioritize some work for that commission? And maybe, you know, suggest things that they should be talking about. I think that could be a workaround of, of maybe the danger you were talking about where, you know, we, we don't have the right liaison and things aren't working well, then we're aware of it anyway.
Right.
So.
Yeah, we certainly could make you all aware of those cancellations as they occur. If, if you were to give the liaison that kind of discretion. But again, I, we, we have found a way to make this work. I, I think we're, I don't think we have the issue that we once had. And now streamlining down to the seven, eight active commissions that we now have today. We do have substantive work, so I don't see a lot of cancellations these days.
So let me, well, there have been, there have been canceled for lack of quorum. There's several that occurred in the last year. And let me, let me just give a preface. So from 2009, I think it was till 2017, all commissions except planning and harbor went to every other month. And there was a lot of complaints about that. And then, and what are you doing Eugene?
Budget and finance for every month.
Yeah, there were a couple of exceptions.
The ordinance, the ordinance only gave two exceptions, but the ordinance changes. But anyway, from 2009 to 2017, you know, they went to every other month. And there was a lot of complaints about that. And I know one of Mayor Brand's priorities was to take that power away and make it, you know, make, put the commission in the driver's seat. Then we came up with, you know, went so far that you couldn't, there was no way to cancel a meeting. And so that's when, just last year, we added the ordinance that said the commission votes the month before on, you know, whether they want to. And that can be for lack of quorum or that could be for lack of work. And having experienced that on harbor commission, I know the liaison, Greg, was very good about saying, here's, here's what's coming up at the next meeting. Or we just don't have anything to talk about. Would you like to cancel? Or I've already got two of you, three of you have said you're going on vacation this month. Is anybody else planning or should we cancel for lack of quorum? And that, that worked very well. I, I see it very rare under the current workload that we put on the commissions that you only have one issue and that issue will suddenly have whoever was there dissolve. And you can still talk about referrals to staff and the, the report from the liaison, which a lot of times is, you know, new, new data that the commission wouldn't otherwise get. They'd have to wait a couple of months. So I'm actually in favor of keeping it the way it is. The one question I do have, the change that I made substantively in the initial one was I, I put the cultural arts commission to monthly and didn't include, there used to be an exclusion for the monthly meetings for the youth commission and for the performing arts, now cultural arts commission. With the youth commission, we took that away because they are going to meet all summer. And I figured with the new workload and with some of the testimony from the cultural arts commissioners during our debate on that was we're going to have too much work if you had, you expand us to cultural arts, we'd have to meet every month. So I just wrote it as every month, but I'm okay with leaving that one every other month. So, so two questions at issue is one, you know, do you want to change the how we cancel meetings? And two, what do you want to do with the cultural arts commission?
So to answer those questions, I think you leave it monthly and you leave it to the commission that, you know, like you said, if everyone's on vacation in August, everybody's planning to miss the next meeting. Should we cancel, you know, the August meeting? On budget and finance, that's how we did it. And I think there might have been only, I can think of maybe one meeting where we only had one or two short items on the agenda. But we still came, went through it. We were in and out in probably 45 minutes. But, but most of the time, we had, you know, a substantial agenda to go through. And I think it was just easier for us to stay on our timeline of when things were supposed to come to us for approval so that they could make it to the council on time by deadline. There, at one point, there was, I think from staff, raised the question of meeting quarterly. And none of us on the commission wanted to do that just because we, you know, our normal meetings were at least probably two hours on average, I would say maybe three. And going quarterly, you know, we would have 10 hour meetings and wouldn't be able to respond to, you know, respond to city council request on time. So I think, you know, just having those regular monthly meetings are great. And then giving the commission the opportunity to cancel if, you know, if they have nothing on the agenda or if they only have one item on the next agenda, you know, they can push it about a month or something like that. So I think leaving it to the commission is best.
Let's see, Councilmember Waller.
With regards to the cancellations or monthly meetings, yeah, I think everything, everything should be set up as monthly. Just make that the baseline. And then with the cancellations, allowing them to cancel it as written, I like. But I also do see the ability for the rare occasion, if the liaison looks at that and like, like city manager said, if there's a lack of business, allow them to do that. Again, it's going to be with notice to the, the city manager. And as Councilmember Kalajevic suggested, with also letting the council know why any meeting was canceled. Because if we see that there's a trend of, hey, this, this one liaison is canceling meetings, there's a whole lot of oversight there. For it to be a problem, that means the liaison and the city manager are both not doing their jobs. And we would hear about that. So I don't think I'm worried that meetings are going to get canceled willy nilly for, you know, just because they just don't want to do the work. So I like giving them that flexibility and the ability to do that. So that, that'd be the only change I'd make to this would be to allow the staff liaison with notice to the city manager and.
Cancellations with city manager approval and coordination.
Just notice to cancel.
Noticing and noticing.
Notice to council, yeah.
Anything else? Councilmember Obaji?
All right. So I wanted to take this on because we have every commission set up for 12 meetings. And if you talk to liaisons or commissions, they'll say that they meet nine to 10 times a year. And that's, you know, two or three meetings that are not going to occur in a given year. The other issue is that if we're going to impose an attendance requirement, like you can only miss three meetings in a rolling 12, 12 month period. The person who is on the phone with the liaison is going to have to decide whether they want to take the hit to cancel the meeting in order to deem themselves absent, not being able to make the meeting in order to trigger the cancellation due to lack of quorum out of the current protocol. So what I propose is that you have the, a requirement that the liaison telegraph or project what's coming up for the next meeting during a, a meeting under the liaison report. If the liaison has no, not, no business for the next meeting, we also put in there that the commission at that time can make a motion to, or, or vote on a motion, make a motion and vote on it to cancel their next meeting. And that way it's canceled on the, and the commission knows that it has the ability to do that based on good information. And obviously, they should only cancel one meeting at a time and the next meeting should be on. So I think that also prevents abuse where the power is in the commission's hands to decide whether, whether or not they need to convene the next time. Now, if information fall, if, if information changes and it's something that was supposed to be on agenda for the next meeting is no longer coming up and liaison can't get it there, rather than just fill a meeting with crap, I think there should be a, a means by which the city council, city, city manager should be able to directly as on to cancel the meeting. And I'd welcome the notice to council as well.
Thank you. I assumed, and, and I haven't watched to the end of every, actually most council, commission meetings, I don't watch to the end. I watch what I'm interested in and then I bail out. But from my practice, I'm used to, to, you know, Director Kapovic telling us what's coming up in the next meeting. Does that not happen at every?
That's not, that, that's becoming more prevalent, again, with a more efficient structure and the, and the greater workload. I would say that's happening at a much higher volume than it did previously when we had 13, 14 commissions to liaison to. But it doesn't, we haven't quite implemented that across the board. I, I do like that practice. I think that is a best practice.
You wouldn't take a heart, would you take heartburn with us memorializing that in the ordinance?
No, I, I don't. I mean, to the extent, again, to the extent practical, right? At that, at any given time, they may not be fully aware of what's ready or going to be planned for that, that in the next four weeks. Sometimes things have to marinate or come together in a, in a timely manner. But yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with us including, candidly, even including in the commission agenda structure, the template that there's a, you know, discussion, you know, a calendaring or a foreshadowing of upcoming business type topic.
Well, they could do it under their, they have.
Yeah. Not all of them do directors' reports. That's not necessarily common across all, all commissions either. So, and then that one has to, we always have to be a little careful with the director's report. It sometimes gets, it runs, runs into conversation in Q and A that perhaps wasn't agendized. So I, I don't, the director's report, I, I'm always a little wary of. So, but if there's a calendaring discussion, that's perfectly allowed.
I actually thought we had, I'd put as an agenda item on each of the commissions that final vote on whether to have a meeting the next commission. But I checked some of the recent ones. I don't see it in there.
I mean, the action's really in the adjournment. Honestly, that's where, you know, that, that's the action is when you adjourn. It's when do you adjourn? So the commission always has the right to adjourn to a different time.
Maybe you just made that explicit, that, that's something that you need to decide at that time. Or in a, I'm seeing the city attorney Ford's expression as if.
I, I wouldn't put it in the ordinance because if it doesn't happen, I wouldn't want to have to prosecute someone who doesn't do it. I think the discussion can lend itself to the liaison trying to put that into practice in its operations. But I wouldn't put that in the, in the ordinance itself.
But, okay, so you wouldn't put in the ordinance that the liaison shall give a report regarding future items?
I, I, I wouldn't recommend that.
Okay, so how about we put it expressed in the ordinance that the commission shall have the option under adjournment to cancel their future meeting on the motion of one and the vote, a majority vote.
Or you're just keeping it as adjourned.
I mean, I think you might actually have that now.
Your journey to the next meeting.
Yeah, we have, we have a little bit of that now.
Yeah.
Which is.
We could make it majority vote of the commissioners, right? Which, which you could, yeah, there you go. Yeah.
And just a quick question on this for the city manager and city attorney. Could, for example, your, in your example, the planning commission is expecting someone to appear for a hearing at their next meeting. Could they adjourn subject to, you know, that person coming?
Ah, I think we still would have to do noticing of the cancellation, I think, if we were. I mean, so, because really what it is, it's about what the expectation is. And then once you set the meeting, you've, you've got a.
You would notice within 24 hours.
Cancellation to terminate the meeting.
Or cancellation.
Okay, how about if we put in the subsection C after adjournment item on the commission agenda, the commission may inquire with liaison as to next meeting, whether there are items for the next meeting. That way, there's no obligation for the liaison to answer. It's just a right that the commission has and kind of like a reminder that that's an option that they have.
It's a good idea. Is it somewhat implied in here?
It does seem like there's a bit of a conversation here.
I mean, how, yeah, when it, how does that play out? We're going to, the conversation may happen already or not. I'm, I'm not sure.
I mean, I mean, you could say during the adjournment item, there, there may be a conversation about future business. Commission may consider that when deciding when, whether or not to, to cancel a meeting. I don't, I mean, you could probably elaborate on that a little bit.
It could be put in the rules of conduct.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, yeah, that might be a better place.
Yeah, but we discuss adjournment, we could add that text.
But I, I certain, and I don't, I have no problem. I will, I will encourage this, you know, even in our department meeting tomorrow. I, I do like the practice of that foreshadowing of business. So I will work with the liaisons to make that more, you know, routine.
Okay. Do we have consensus? So is everybody okay with cultural arts commission going monthly? Anybody doesn't like that?
I'm okay as long as we've got the cancellation out. I, I'm fine with it. Yeah.
They can cancel it and turn it into bi-monthly.
And there's enough public artwork coming, I think, where they'll be busy for the foreseeable future.
Puts them in the driver's seat.
Yeah.
And then from what I'm hearing, we want to write in that the city manager can, can approve cancellation but must inform the council. And for lack of business or quorum, really.
It's either, yeah.
Be informed on any cancellation, basically.
And then we'll add some text to the adjournment section that allows the commission to ask about fut, you know, what's.
Inquire here.
Items. Okay.
All right.
Anything else in the? We already talked about striking marketing from the, the non-agenda items stuff.
So on the uniform, ordinance is, just to highlight a couple of things. One is concerns partial terms. So this language that we proposed adding, just makes clear if you serve a partial term, it doesn't count as a full term against your two term limits. However, if you serve multiple partial terms, then when, right? So it could happen, you have somebody who serves two times less than two years.
Right.
And the intent is, well, in that scenario, that should count as a full term. We're going to refine this language likely with the city attorney to make sure that's captured here.
Can you give me an example of that scenario where someone serves two partial terms back to back?
Well, wouldn't it be back to back? It could be separated by a period of time.
Okay.
And we know some folks have been on commissions back and forth over the years before, after elected office. So it's a bit of housekeeping. So you can maybe, yeah.
Okay.
So somebody fills in, they do a one and a half year term.
Yeah.
And then 10, 15 years later, they do another one and a half year term that they fill in and.
So let me give you a real world example. So I got, I got, and this may not be precise, but I served for a year on the harbor commission, you know, as an appointee. Then I served one term and let's say I only served a day less than two years. So I didn't serve a second full term because I was appointed to be mayor. And then afterwards. full term because I was appointed to be mayor. And then afterwards I said, well, I'd like to be a Harbor Commissioner. Well, when you add it up, I, you add up the two partials, I would have exceeded two terms.
Okay.
So that's a real, I'm not saying that I was under two years. I'm just saying that's something that could occur. And we have, we have appointed, not, not this commission, not, not this council, but other councils have appointed former council members to commissions. I think, uh, Councilmember Kilroy was just about on every commission.
Parsons, Councilmember Parsons.
Parsons was on, yeah.
And right now, and right now we're limited to two full terms in any
Commission.
Commission or?
Same, same board, same commission.
Per commission.
Okay, per commission. Okay.
Commission.
So the idea would be if somebody has already served seven years on a particular commission, they've done two full terms.
Effective two full.
Effective, yeah. Okay.
But you're gonna come up with more precise because we discussed the potential misreading.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make it clear as to the intention that we just discussed unless any, okay. When, uh, when we hear last, we talked about how many absences will trigger somebody being removed from a commission and the consensus was three. We've included that here.
Just on bullet two for the new board members.
Yeah.
That just seems redundant to, if you're on a commission, you can be absent three times. And then we have a paragraph that says new board members.
That was recommendation from city attorney, city attorney staff that said, what if you, it's your first term and you go back. If you go back twelve months, like we're saying, you would not have served all those times until you got appointed. And so this was meant to
You're not appointed.
Yeah, but it says look back twelve months.
Well, during the previous twelve months, I see.
So I, the, the intention was to address this issue both prospectively and going forward. So an existing border, an existing border commissioner who is absent from three regular meetings of such board or commission during the previous twelve months.
Cheryl, do you want to address this? You, I think you were the recommend of B.
Because if you, I guess my position is if you haven't joined a commission, you're not present or absent. And then once you join, that's when the clock starts. And if you're absent three times within, you know, but within twelve months. Or even if it was six months, you would be off the commission. And that's whether you've been there or not. So that's.
I don't mind having it. It makes it very clear.
I mean, it just seems redundant to me, like every, you know.
Well, if you went back twelve months and they've only been three months on the commission and they didn't, and they, and they.
They weren't, they've only been there three.
Are you gonna start that clock upon implementation? Or are you gonna, or is there gonna be a?
Yeah, well, that, and so that's the second issue is when do we kick this in? Do we want it, hey, from this day forward, the new rules, Mayor Shaken said, no.
You want, you want to go back it?
I think we should go back. We've been giving them a slide because we weren't enforcing the two, the two, the two meeting misses.
Isn't that a violation of the X plus factor law or prohibition?
Well, except they serve at our.
All right. So that, so it sounds like the decision point is, so item two here, a new border commission member, if you're absent from three regular meetings during your first year of your appointment, then your seat's declared vacant.
I did, I did think that it was redundant when I read it actually before, so.
I'm glad we're talking through it.
You can't be absent from a meeting that you're not.
Yeah.
So.
Member of. I defer to the city attorney because that was added.
Okay. Well, so let's start with this one right here. If you're absent for three regular meetings of the border commission during the first year, you're vacant.
Yeah, and that would have also been within the previous twelve months.
An existing border commission member is absent from three regular meetings during the previous.
A board or commission member, not existing, not new.
Okay. Going forward or prospectively as well.
During.
I mean, going forward makes this a much easier provision to draft, right? I mean, it
Okay.
You only have one of these two. It's your retrospective language that requires the, the duplicate standard.
And, and if we go retrospective, there's probably a whole slate of people who automatically are vacated.
And potentially, yeah.
That wasn't the rule.
Well, two was the rule. We just didn't enforce it. They should already be.
Right.
They may be conditioned.
Now we're really serious. Yeah.
Well, we still have the leeway. We, we can pull them for any, you know, at our just, they serve at our will and we don't have to have a reason for pulling them.
So should.
We have a standard now. We can judge again.
We do have a stand. I, I do kind of like the idea of doing the, you may not be absent from three meetings, starting now, going forward. You're on notice. It's in the code. No more sliding. You're okay with it. And that would also to the points of Councilmember Castle, Obaji, get rid of the redundancy. Yeah?
Yep.
All right. Okay.
I would advise you, and I'll send out the link, that there's a new BI tool. It makes it very easy to go back and see how many people have missed. There's one, there's one definition we have to nail down and that's, if the meeting's canceled, everybody just shows canceled. We have to see, see who was caused the cancellation and that's not, not in there today.
I'm not sure if we're gonna, where it is in here, but I do have a question for the city attorney about, you were just talking about, you know, the council has a right to essentially end a commissioner's time on a commission. Should that be something that's voted on and discussed in closed session versus open session?
The way it's written now, it's an open session.
Right, but is, is.
There's no exception to, there's no category for closed session. Like closed sessions specifically limited to negotiations or litigation. I can't see a category that that would fit under.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
What about personal performance? We can't do that in the public.
Well, that's not, that's not an employee. It's a commissioner.
Right.
Some of this stuff, you might want to let them go without it being known why.
I mean, you can do that behind the scenes, but not in closed session.
Okay, because that's limited to very.
Yeah, very specific criteria.
Only two of the council can know. Because we can't discuss, can't discuss it with all, well, I guess I can discuss with all, I can't tell what each other says, right? We have a means to do it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I, I, yeah, I was gonna say, I think that was it on the uniform code. So I'll move on to the next item.
Actually, one quick question. I said you, you are paused over the notice has to be put into a newspaper, local newspaper. If we want to be looking forward,
Yeah.
there may not be a local newspaper in twenty years. We don't know.
I thought we took care of that.
Definition of publication we changed, right?
It says official newspaper.
Charter, we changed publication.
Right, right here. We've got official newspaper.
So, George, we could change that to be consistent with the charter. Doesn't require a newspaper.
Okay. I just thought of it.
Yeah, thanks for thinking of it. I've highlighted it.
Yeah, we, I guess are we even obligated to have that in the ordinance itself if it's already enshrined in our publishing requirement?
create an ordinance for that charter.
Well, every ordinance is gotta be published under the charter requirements currently, right? Does that have to be restated in the ordinance itself?
Maybe we can delete it.
I mean, I'm wondering if we even need that.
Okay.
I don't know. I'd have to look.
I mean, the charter speaks to the publishing requirements, correct? And do we always have that in our language?
We still need the thirty-day passage though. We need the last line.
Part of the resolution.
Okay.
We restate that in there?
When the time, yeah.
Well, that'll be a final formatting thing. We'll, we'll cover that.
Yep. Okay, moving on, Public Works and Sustainability Commission. You know, one, one question we had, and maybe we could revisit it another time, concerns, you know, the, this language here. And I think Director Winji took a look at it. You know, what is and is not required by state law with respect to the appointment of members?
I thought the response was this was required by the ADA stuff we implemented into this commission.
And I think we're relying on the practical difficulty standard there to cover.
Yeah, it, it seemed like it may have been a combination of two different requirements under the code, and it wasn't clear if this necessarily a, if we're still doing those ADA appeals or not. I, I just flagged that issue of does this still apply to our commission? Are we doing the appeals to which the state requires you have these qualifications? In other words, ADA appeals.
I, I think Luke did a little bit of research on that early on. I, and as we were creating the Sustainability Commission and this was a construct of the merger, I think.
Yeah, it was. This was taking that handicapped access appeals board that had previously existed as a standalone, but hadn't been stood up in multiple decades. There, there was no memory of it being necessary. And so in talking with Director Winji, as we contemplated these changes and adding it in year ago, year and a half ago, when, when we did consolidate, this was something that we're not seeing a lot of, but we did want to have the, the ability to stand up that appeals board if it was necessary. And instead of having that standalone ad hoc, we have it here. And this is something that is attached to that, to that handicapped access appeals board, a legacy, legacy requirement there. But that practical hardship standard does, you know, if we don't have people that fit these criteria that are applying, the interpretation when I was working with Alina was that that would cover us in those cases.
Alina from the city attorney's office?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, I would love for people to apply.
Yeah.
Not just to this one, but all commissions.
So I think our, our short answer here is I think we're okay with this continuing. And, and to answer your first part of that question, we have, we have not had the need to meet thankfully, uh, for, still for many decades. So.
Okay.
Although you did, the one thing you may want to cover at the top is the title of the commission.
Thank you. So, um, Public Works Safety and Sustainability Commission. And we'll, we'll get to that, uh, in here in a moment.
Well, that was a change from last time because we said safety traffic and
Right.
I think it was Councilmember Obaji said they already do traffic in the other one. So.
Substantial workload.
So we don't need to add it in.
Okay. So, you know, what do they do? This is their powers and duties, advising the mayor and council. It's fairly prescribed. There's some flexibility to do more, but only if the direction of the city council or city manager or staff liaison with the approval and or direction of the city manager. We've added in, proposed to add in a, a few other things, sustainability issues related to public works department, operational activities and infrastructure, et cetera. As directed by the city council, city manager, staff liaison. I think this is an item, Mary, that you had put into your recommended amendment.
This was moving from, you know, the, from the debate on
Yeah.
shutting down the public safety commission.
Mm-hmm.
You know, picking up the one thing that I thought people kind of gelled on that was a valid function that we'd have to carry on, I, that, I, I wrote that up and put it in here.
Okay. And that.
I was looking at the crime stats and the, and the first responders.
Should we make that like once a year rather than them thinking that you're gonna get it all the time, every, every month?
Let's see, uh, let's see, annual basis. Okay. All right. And this, so this paragraph here has to do with what was at one point proposed as the, a separate standalone Police, Fire and Homeless Services Commission. We folded those in here, folded those items in here instead, meaning what otherwise would have gone to that potential new commission will be part of the, uh, Public Works Safety and Sustainability Commission. And we, we had this conversation last time, so I, I won't, uh, go through it, uh, repeat it again. So nothing new on that. And that's pretty much it. Any, go ahead.
One thing I think we've avoided
Yeah.
that Councilmember Castle brought up under the, um, rules of decorum is we have that repeated phrase about the liaison, the city manager and the council.
Oh.
Maybe this is, we should resolve that and, and implement that across all ordinances. So but, but I'm, I don't agree with what you were, I don't agree with the wording, at least it sounded like you were proposing because we're not going to direct everything. And, and if we put the count, you know, per council direction, that's pretty specific.
I, I, maybe I'll add something here. I, I actually think the way this is written consistently, uh, really does work. And it is consistent with how we've operated with the commissions, whether it be budget, finance or planning. And the liaison, I think, to be in its ideal form, the liaison is working proactively with the commission to address issues, bring them to their attention for review and to help vet things before they come to the council that are within our broader work program, strategic plan, budget, et cetera. So in an ideal world, liaisons are, are beating the council to the punch effectively, right? And anticipating your needs. This at least gives us that ability to do that. And it still gives you the ability to then direct downward in case those items have been missed. So I like this shared responsibility. I don't think it necessarily means that a liaison gets to lead the commission around by, you know, their nose, so to speak. I think it just allows them to work cooperatively with the commission rather than wait for direction from you all or me.
Okay. And I'll tell you, when I wrote this, it, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to reflect practice that seems to be working. I, I would say ninety percent of the time it is the liaisons creating the agenda.
The initiative. Yeah, it's their initiative typically. And that's what I'm expecting of them, candidly.
And, and we've not had a problem. We can always course correct them when we've defined the jurisdictions. They can't take it out of the jurisdiction.
Right. Okay.
So if I read this correctly, this means that during referrals to staff on, at council, we can make a referral to a lia, to, to a commission, right?
We've done that.
We have, in the past, we have not been able to do that.
No, we've done it.
I feel like in the past, as a referral.
Definitely gone to.
You know, I, I've, I've asked before, maybe it was when it was web was city attorney. Can we, can we, can we put something on the agenda of a commission? He said, no. Right? Is that right?
Well, what, what you're effectively doing is you're referring to me, right? That, hey, we'd like the commission to look at this. And then by way of practice, the liaison then would put it on their agenda, what, at the appropriate time, you know, depending on the timeliness of the, of the, of the items. So.
But this definitely would allow it.
This definitely makes that clear that that is an opportunity.
Well, and the, the, the new agenda that we, that we proposed, which I don't know that you've done anything with, that, that drafted proposed agenda, that item has been changed to referrals to, to city manager, to commissions and to subcommittees. Because we have referred to the different subcommittees. We've, I've referred one to council. I, well, I asked the council to and you guys approved it. So we have done it in this, in this forum.
What, what situation would this council not be able to ask the commission to look at something? I mean, just.
It's just, I've, I've gotten that response before years ago when I asked if we could make refer, like get something on the agenda.
The, the good news is it's crystal clear now.
Right, yeah, okay.
I think, mark it off.
Yeah, okay.
What do you call it? A difference without a differentiation?
Difference without a distinction, difference without a distinction.
All right.
Because I know the, I mean, the council basically directed the amenities plan to the Harbor Commission.
Yeah, in, in, there have been many times where the councils refer to matter that's been reviewed by, by commissions. There, there could have been circumstances. If the question was posed, you know, where, hey, can a, can a commission, can the council directly place the item on the agenda or
Yeah, I mean.
You know, maybe it could have just been in the phrasing, but yeah, when things are working properly, the liaison is working collaboratively with the commission, council is directing policy issues that we're all, you know, may or may not be anticipating and, and giving the commission a chance to opine.
Yeah, and I know we've said we'd like the planning commission's, you know, opinion of this.
And Harbor.
Cannabis you sent to multiple bodies. I mean, we've done, we've done many, many things. Yeah.
So I just, I just tried to document what we really do under that section.
Yep.
All right. Uh, planning commission ordinances, that, did you, I'm sorry.
And, no, go, go for it. No, I just have an overarching question. Do you all anticipate having changes to this stuff subsequently?
Yep.
Good question. Oh, well, I mean.
Not substantive.
Substantive, no.
Subsequent to this conversation that you haven't articulated in the meeting, do you think that you're gonna have, want to have changes? Because I, I just don't want us to go through another two, three hour meeting, you know, nitpicking and making these changes where the mayor could kind of quarterback it and incorporate your changes going forward after, for example, maybe you send him your final draft, then he, he quarterbacks it from there.
Maybe. I mean, the plan we have. Maybe, I mean, the plan we have in place is if there's anything else, we're going to have this sort of short meeting on October 7th where it's put in the public record and we're good.
They said they want to come back next week.
Yeah, you, I think you stepped out of the time. Yeah, there was, yeah, we're going to, we're going to bring this same item back next week. And then there's one more chance for a data dump.
Data dump.
And then we'll finalize on the 7th.
Ising, and then we're good.
But I think we're getting towards the end here.
We're going to have to have city attorney once we make color changes. We've got to, because they scrubbed it on the first round. I don't want them to scrub each interim round.
They won't, I'm going to work closely with them on that. All right, Planning Commission? Yes?
Abolish it.
No, this is, this is the Harbor Commission too, right?
Oh, no.
We already did that.
That was like two commissioners.
Councilmember Barron Commission.
So, yeah, so on the Planning Commission, this is what was in the pack, agenda packet. Powers and duties don't change. What's been included here is listing out in one ordinance, the powers of this planning commission that are found in other parts of the code. So just listing them.
So we have parenthetical A and then a period?
Yeah, good point. These could go to Roman at one, whatever.
Let's go for substance. We can get some formatting.
I'm glad you spotted, I didn't see it, so yeah, but I'm going to flag it.
So again, from what the ordinance is today to here, there was like two little blurbs that said, follow the state laws and follow the ordinances and charter of Redondo Beach. That would require the planning commission to all research all the regs or ordinances. I went through and combed them for every reference and just listed it here so they don't have to do what I did just to, and I did learn, I didn't know some of this stuff was in their purview. I'm not sure they do.
You're going to get a thank you card.
Thank you card. So that's sort of the sum and substance of these revisions. Not a lot on substance, but as far as convenience and putting it in there, that's been done. Anybody, anything on that Planning Commission ordinance? No, hearing none. Budget and Finance Commission?
See, I do have one, and this is just one of the global clarifications we need to, some of the commissioners are, it says appointed by the mayor, some, I think this was the one that said appointed by each council or, well, it's each council district, but it was like some are council members, some are the mayor, and just however we are going to define that.
So all of them, good question. All commissioners are appointed by the mayor, subject to approval by council. And what's intended here is one mayor shall be appointed from.
Each council district.
Not by each council member.
Okay.
The, yeah, all the track changes, it gets a little blurry at times.
And in some places, it said resident versus registered voter. That was another thing that's just globally in the document, just to be clear on whichever way we want to go. I would think.
Really doesn't matter because that's covered under the uniform. It says qualifications. You have to be a resident and a voter.
Right, well, I mean, just, we say it different ways in different places, so just whatever it is.
Yeah, we should be consistent.
Be consistent, okay.
Consistency.
I have.
Yeah, go ahead.
Another one on this. I think it was in section C. Where was it?
Which C?
You have a page number. Right. I think, hold on. So maintain continuous study of sources of municipal revenue and methods of proper spending of public monies. I think that should just say, talk about the city's finances instead of just revenue and expenses. So on the budget and finance, we talk about investments. We talk about debt. Those aren't revenue or expenses. So I would just change, update that to say.
Reserves.
Reserves, we talk about reserves. You know, maintain continuous study of the city's finances and assist the city manager and council in financial planning.
Finances being a global for revenue, reserves, et cetera, et cetera.
Assets, you know, liabilities, everything.
If you've suggested wording. Yeah, and put it in right here.
Yeah, just city.
I think of the city's finances.
To do a study of the city's finances.
And then assist the city manager, can you, financial planning? Yeah.
Including.
I mean, if you want, you can say, included but not limited to revenues, expenses.
Okay.
Assets, reserves, et cetera. I mean.
Is there any downside to doing that from?
Yeah, I mean.
But that would, that would be covered under finances?
Yeah, under finances. I think that's where maybe you just, you leave it at finances and then you don't have.
You don't have to list.
You really don't have a limit.
Treasurer, do you want to come up and say something?
Real limits.
I was trying to look at you, James, back there. Mr. Treasurer.
Well, it looks like he wants to say something and he's involved with this commission.
I don't want to preclude myself from saying something later, but when we, when I first got on the Budget and Finance Commission, one of the first things we addressed was some of the charter bidding processes in section 19 that ended up on the City Charter Review Committee and ended up being a charter amendment. So some of those operational functions with regard to the city were part of discussions that I thought were valuable. And I don't know that would be encompassed by any other commission that we have. Maybe bidding would be covered by Public Works, but some of those, some of those things related to finances but weren't specifically perhaps considered finances.
Financial operations.
I would just say city finances.
Finances, okay.
Yes, that covers everything.
That's good. You like the broader term?
Yeah.
Yeah, city's finances, okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. All right. Okay. Cultural Arts Commission. I think we talked about making the change to once a month meetings. Yeah, I'm not, was that for the Cultural Arts Commission? Or was that?
Yes.
And so where, trying to recall where in here we mentioned that. Pointment.
Uh, somewhere there.
Wouldn't that be in the uniform section?
Under 2-9-dot-1404 towards the end. Meetings.
Right, right.
Every other month.
So maybe just delete that section.
Second to last.
Okay.
Just delete that whole section.
Right.
Because now it's applicable in the uniform code.
Right. Okay. Okay. Public Amenities Commission. So there, not much in the way of substantive changes, more of rephrasing and I think condensing some of these items. And I know the mayor had put some time on this.
Yeah, and the reason that the changes were driven, the original ordinance required them to do stuff like let contracts, and they were responsible for the listings of historical resources, not reviewing them, but actually that they're done, and they don't have the means to do that. So I tried to write it into things that they could do that still applied to those, to those areas. Assistant city manager, Smoothie did run this by the state, if I'm correct, and they, they were okay with the wording changes because with preservation, you have to run it by the state and.
Correct, we're a certified local agency under the State Office of Historic Preservation, and we had a staff member from that office opine on these and indicate that we'd still be able to keep our certified local program status with these changes.
So it's rewritten to things they could actually do and have authority to do, and it was passed by the state, so.
Yeah, so to the mayor's point, instead of retain consultants, they recommend consultants to be retained. Okay.
I assume we've left all the other recreation functions and everything else that we had.
Yeah.
No, they're just preservation now.
There we go, okay, I see.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, correct, and, you know, for, we did make a couple small proposed changes so that there's not overlap between two different commissions. For example, we have it here under Recreation and Parks Duties, act as advisor to the city council in all matters pertaining to public recreation programs, including playgrounds and public recreation-related entertainment. The, the purpose of that, yeah, was because we had another commission, I think, Mary, you pointed out, where, you know, they may be advising on entertainments. We wanted to make this one limited to public recreation-related entertainment. So minor changes like that, just by going through and, all right.
Like the bands on the pier, that's done through this?
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, there's still potential for, at the end of the day, how we assign the workload, you know, you know, Shakespeare by the sea as an example, right? Could that fall into the purview of the Cultural Arts Commission? Sure, right? If, if we're talking about a potential activity, Fourth of July activity at the Seaside Lagoon, that probably falls under the Public Amenities Commission, right? So we'll just have to make a judgment call as to how that particular event or entertainment, does it fall on the cultural side or the recreational side?
We've given the tools to do that now, so. All right. Ordinance pertaining to historic resources, preservation. Not much in here. I think, Mary, your intent was to include the name change only, preservation.
Yeah, it's under Preservation Commission, which no longer.
You're just updating that, yeah, makes sense, yeah.
Truing it up with the current status. The fun of, as you dig in, you find more.
Always more.
I was surprised that some of the ages are, at this point for our city, not all that old. You know, a district would be 30 years old with, as long as it's significant and all that. It's like, that's new houses.
Well, I think we did that survey in 19, whatever it was, 94 or something.
And that, that is it for the proposed changes, so.
Can we start from the top?
You want to go back?
Just one quick one through.
One last review.
Summarize them all for us.
Any other comments allowed?
Verbalize all of the.
I think that's very productive.
Can we send this to commissions to read aloud?
Could, could direct them.
So we don't have to take an action on, I mean.
No, I think your, I think the idea is we would continue this item the next week with the inputs provided.
Public comment, motion to what?
Continue.
We need a motion to continue? Okay. Before we vote on it, any member of the public? I have Jim Mueller, but it appears he's left the audience unless he's just outside.
I think he's.
I think he left, he's been gone.
Okay, anybody from the public?
Sir, you've spoken already.
Set the timer.
I have a policeman to kick you.
Uh, thank you, Eugene Solomon, Redondo Beach, speaking for myself tonight. Councilmember Waller made a point earlier when we were talking about Zoom meetings. Should be contemplative of future for all of these things. So Zoom and other emergent participation technologies or something like that, to be contemplative of things and not have to go back and change the ordinance in the future. I feel very passionately about this. I feel like a lot of the code of conduct is limitation on speech and expression. So the way it's written now, if somebody from one of our union groups comes up and is wearing a union T-shirt, that's a political expression, that would be prohibited. Pride shirt, shirt supporting Black Lives Matter, a shirt supporting Ukraine, these would all be political expressions that would be prohibited. And I don't find that that would be a just use of this ordinance. Freedom of speech guarantees the right to express oneself without fear of government punishment. When you're talking about the commissioners, let's talk about process. You have activities on social media, all of us that have been elected, the staff members, the city manager.
Not me.
Mister, like where you're an emperor. With the exception of perhaps Mr. Smoothie, have had somebody say something about us that is improper, inappropriate, outright false. That's the right of people to do it. That's, that you take on this role knowing that. And us policing behavior on social media seems to be a step too far. What's the process for that? When somebody's engaging in what would be improper conduct, justifiably so, they're making outrageous allegations, saying ridiculous things. So is that flagged by a member of the council? Who brings that to the attention of the council? How is that heard? Is it a council that then agendized meeting? What, how, what is that process in order to do that? You want to remove that person? Or you want to give them a warning? What's that process look like? What if it's somebody who is the chair of the committee? Our current mayor, future mayor? And, but it's the mayor who's in violation of that code? Who enforces that? What is the process there? There's going to be a conflict for the city attorney's office. City attorney represents the city. What if it's the city attorney who violates that code? So there's, there seems to be some process that needs to be worked through here. And I just, the intention is great. I think the mayor did a great job putting all this together. This is what the mayor, one of the many things he's really good at is putting all these things together and distilling them. And Commissioner, Councilmember Barron's work, all really great, but you still have a ways to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Do you have a card? Oh, the person left.
We had one card for Jim Mueller, but he wasn't here.
Let's get online.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, a couple of things that were brought up, I thought, I'd actually like the suggestion of Mr. Waller, or Councilmember Waller brought up about the marketing or public announcements yesterday in the beginning. I know there's some concerns about perhaps adding it more time, but if you limit that to one minute, then you're not going to have, then you're not going to have, as we've had many times, serial members of the same group come up. I'm the president, three minutes. I'm the vice president, three minutes. Oh, I'm the secretary of the assistant of the vice president, another three minutes. So now you've beaten up almost half the time for public comment. Something to think about. I don't think that's a bad idea. Also, I do concur with most of what Mr. Solomon did, just presented. I think that we're kind of going down a slippery slope by limiting a lot of free speech comments and especially when it says, and some of the comment, the wording in here is just basically saying that the public may not be aware, the distinction between an individual, their personal and their private, their roles as head commissioner or in the, in the, in the public. Well, when we come up the, to the podium, Mr. Solomon did it. He said, I'm coming up and speaking as a private citizen. I am too right now. I don't think it's really hard to distinguish between that. And again, the criteria that you come up with and determining what's inappropriate or not, I don't know. What's inappropriate? Is it when someone's talking and then someone up at the dais looking at their phone and not listening to someone? Is that disrespectful? I don't know. I mean, it's certainly something to consider. And I think that while the intention is well served because obviously some commissioners have to be reminded, and that's usually in the Brown Act, like if you're going to have something agendized, well, you probably shouldn't be talking about it on public comment or, or social media because you can get yourself an issue from that. You might have to be recused and that could potentially put the city at risk. And I think most commissioners understand that when they're behind the dais, they are representing the city and that's fine. I mean, if you want to talk about how they're acting in the dais, they're not throwing rocks at people in the audience or swearing or something like that, that's fine. But, you know, someone who's on the, online saying, I don't like what so and so did or don't like what the council voted on this, that shouldn't be a determination to say, well, you know what, I don't like how they're being critical. Let's have them removed from the commission. That sets a bad precedent. And I think that First Amendment does, I think we should side more to that because of not, I think there's a lot of nonprofit First Amendment groups that would be happy to take up litigation of this sort and they do. There's a lot of case law on this type of stuff. So just be careful. I mean, I, I think you're well intended, but you know, the application of this is like, like Mr. Solomon said, how do you enforce that? How do you, what's the process? What's the procedure? You have nothing there at all. It's a big gray area and I think any attorney would say, you know, if you kind of ask the question whether that's safe or not, you probably shouldn't. Anyway, thanks.
Anyone else wish to address this item? Anyone online?
Yes.
Mark Hanson.
Good evening, mayor, city council, city staff, Mark Hanson, King Harbor voter. I want to thank all of you for your hard work, your diligence on this. This is going to sit, serve the city well and, and serve the harbor commission very well. Two comments, one of them general on the agenda. I sent you all a note today encouraging us to move the participation for the public to in front of the consent calendar. You guys had a good discussion on that this evening and I'm empathetic to the fact that sometimes we have staff that's there specifically in case you guys pull something from the consent calendar for them to support. Taking that on balance, it's, it's a little bit asymmetrical as I thought about it because for that staff, they know they're only going to have to wait a absolute maximum of the 30 minutes and maybe less. Whereas for the public, waiting on the consent calendar items, they have no idea. Those could go, you know, for a much more lengthy amount of time. And as I mentioned in my brief email today, you know, we've been up against that where various of us who are more involved with these things, we get questions from the community saying, hey, I want to make a comment. When's that going to come up? And we can't give them a very good answer at all. Whereas obviously for staff being there, they know exactly, you know, 30 minutes maximum they're going to have to wait. So with that kind of asymmetry, I, I would continue to recommend that you consider moving public participation and non-agenda items up in front of the consent calendar. Second thing I wanted to comment on, you had a good discussion about the harbor commission qualifications regarding having a resident who lived adjacent to the harbor area. And some of us were thinking, well, that wouldn't be hard to fill. But then when staff reminded us about the thousand foot rule, now listen, we're talking about a relatively narrow North Thousand Sliver that people are going to have to live in for that. And we're going to be right back up, up against the problem we've had for decades where sometimes we have a very highly qualified person we want to use. And now if they don't happen to live in that particular sliver, we can't use them if that year, let's say whoever we did have in that, that geographic spot happens to fall off. Now of everybody in town, the only one we can use is somebody who lives in that sliver. So on that one, and I know this is, was near and dear to Councilman Castle's heart, so I'll lobby a little, have you think about that, that, you know, we don't want to find ourselves with that unintended consequence of having great folks that we can't use because they don't live in that sliver. Hope those two comments are helpful and thanks again for all your hard work on this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
That concludes the Zoom. And then we comments for the record.
I did have some comments there. I'm, I'm a little concerned in the framing of your statements there, Eugene, in that I think everywhere where it's a requirement, it's very specific. And then there's, there's pretty much, there's words like the council expects. It doesn't say demands. It doesn't say you shall comply. It's just saying, and the original word was asks, but I'm okay with expect. And it says refrain from use of profanity, obscenity, offensive language in speech and on signs and on clothing. That doesn't say you can't wear your union shirt or your Lana Kila shirt or your, your city of Redondo shirt. And it doesn't even if you do wear something that has an expletive, it just says we ask or we expect. It doesn't say you're, you're denied access because of that. So I'm not sure. You know, I don't, I don't, I think we were trying to be very precise with our wording in that, you know, we'd like everybody to be nice to each other and be respectful and that, and we're asked that. And then there's certain things that if you go beyond that, like you're not talking to the issue or you're, or you're continuing to talk after your time's up, or you're blocking people's views or you're intimidating people, those are things you can't do. And that's, we tried to very precisely word then. I'll ask the city attorney to help make sure we're, we're, you know, very, very clear in, in how we write this when we finalize all this. I don't expect every interim piece to be done. But that was the intent and, you know, to the extent that you may have misread that, I mean, we'll take a look at it, but that was, that was the intent to just ask people. And none of this did I just write out of my own. I didn't make it up. I found each of these examples from other cities or actually from earlier versions of our own. And so I, I consolidated what I found out there, kind of cherry picked the things that I, that fit from what the council commented on through the years and since I've been on board. But try to be very precise on what's asks or expects, but not demands and, and aren't grounds for kicking people out. Similarly with the commissions, you know, we're, we're expecting, we're asking people to, to be civil and to, and to address issues, not, not attack people. But it's not saying we'll boot you if you don't. We already have the right in the one ordinance to boot anybody for, we don't even have to have a reason. So, so that's not the intent of this. It's to kind of steer, there's a couple of places where people have misused their title. And that's a shall, you can't do that. But the other stuff is just suggestions and requests. So I'll ask the city attorney as we go through this, make sure we're precise on that wording and that we're not violating people's rights because that's not the intent. With that, anybody else after public comment want to say anything on this? I have no hands raised. Are we all done? So we have a motion to continue? Did we get a second?
Second.
Okay, all four?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Now I got to find my agenda.
Referrals. Yeah, mayor's referral to staff.
Okay, referrals to staff. I have none today or no request for the council to refer for me. So council member Waller.
Yes, I have a BRR that I would like to have them look into once per year, deep cleaning of the esplanade to remediate the pet urine and other stains and to, as part of that, look into alternative products, cleaning protocols, vendors, making sure that we are NPDES compliant in those results. But I guess I can't justify anymore.
And can we bring, when you say the esplanade, can we bring that all the way up to the area behind the old library, all the way up to the harbor? So the walkway that's up there as well, that's been an issue behind the old library that needs to be cleaned as well.
And to the promenade and to the
As you say, the walking path.
Yeah. At the new bike.
I'll tell you what, we'll, we'll try to create a bit of a linear foot cost maybe or something.
I don't know how much
Councilmember Waller mentioned this might be coming. I mentioned that I would, wouldn't take long for it to progress to Artigia Boulevard and the village.
I've actually run about that area, but, you know, by the park, not that Veterans Park.
Okay, is that it?
I was just going to ask that.
Is it?
Does that fall within BR from your perspective? I mean, what you're doing there, I mean, just cost to do that?
Yes, it is. It's an inquiry as to potential expense to bring on what I would call a special treatment, special cleaning treatment. Obviously, we, we have a regular power washing crew. They can do only so much with the equipment that we have available to us.
Is that for mid-year or, or next year?
For budget.
Well, there's mid-year budget and a
Oh.
Next year.
I'd say up to the discretion of the city manager, whether it fits better for mid-year or final budget.
I have nothing.
Nothing, thank you.
I don't know that we need a discussion, but just to get out of the open, I'd like to request a bus for the final EIR hearing at Metro, please.
Ooh.
I second that.
We have a second?
It's a discussion about the, the cost and, I mean.
This is going to come up for the budget. So this isn't a BRR.
No, it's not a BRR.
We, we can research the cost, bring it back and I'll let you know if it's something I can do within my administrative discretion. If it's not, ultimately I'll bring it back as a council item.
I think it's, it's worth a just, a brief discussion in that, you know, I, I'd like to make sure that we also have the attendance to necessitate an entire bus, right?
So is there a second?
I seconded yes.
All four?
Wait, before we go there, this is regarding the
Green Line Extension.
in the right of way.
Yeah, you'll have to recuse yourself on that.
Oh, the sea line extension.
Sea line, green line, yeah.
Yeah. I'm going to abstain.
Okay, all four?
Aye.
So four.
One abstention.
And one abstention.
That's it. Thanks.
That's it. Okay, council member Barron?
None.
I have 12 BRRs since I can't make a motion.
That hasn't been approved yet.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn to next
So should we change the title to say mayor, mayor BRRs and council refers to staff? Is that what we should have on the agenda tablet?
Motion to adjourn.
To adjourn to next Tuesday, 4:30 for closed session, six o'clock for open session and right here in the city.
Can I inquire if we have business next week?
Should we cancel? Okay, all four?
Aye.
Okay. We're adjourned what?
Okay.
Who seconded that?
Brad.
Councilmember Rabaji.